Okay, we're good.
Okay, very good. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically by Zoom on November 11th, on November 13th, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on November 8th, 2024, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov/meeting. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order number 292, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meeting Protocol for local public bodies to conduct public meeting, a public meeting without a physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
George, you're muted.
I'm here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, before we begin, if there's anyone in the audience who's here for 12 to 16 Witherspoon, let me get the case number Z 24-471. That will be carried until a future meeting. It won't be heard this evening.
It will be noticed, too.
Yeah, it'll be noticed.
It'll be noticed again, yes. Okay. So, we have four resolutions to deal with. Our first is case number Z 22-33648 Pardo. The resolutions are in your packet. If anybody has any questions or comments, if not, if someone would like to make a motion.
I will move to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions before we vote? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, our next resolution is case number Z 24-512 15 Stony Brook Lane, block 4901, lot 13, in the R2T zone. Once again, the resolutions in your packet, questions, comments, or motions.
I will move to approve.
Thank you, George. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, Claudia, can you call a roll? If there are no comments on the motion, excuse me. Okay, call a roll, Claudia.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our third case is case number Z 24-46866 Lee Avenue Block 6906, lot 17. Again, the resolutions are in your packet, questions, comments, or motion.
I move to approve.
That, Donna, was that you?
No, that was me.
Oh, you, sorry. Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? If not, Claudia, can you call a roll?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our last resolution is case Z 24-522169 John Street, block 17. Excuse me, 17.03, lot 95, in the R4B zone. Same as before, the packet, the resolutions in your packet, questions, comments, or motion.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
I'll second, Stein.
Thank you. Questions on the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call a roll?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, as I said earlier, our first case scheduled for this evening, 12 to 16 Witherspoon, case Z 24-471, will not be heard this evening. It will be carried. So, our next case is case number Z 24-5387 Park Place, block 28.01, lot 3.01, in the R4B zone. Karen, is everything in order?
Yes, the notice thing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, can you read your memo, please?
Mr. Bridger, will just swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Leverly Properties LLC is the owner of Seven Park Place. Eileen Bitterly is the applicant. She is seeking a floor area ratio pursuant to NJS 40,55D-70D4 to permit expansion of the attic and the construction of two attic dormers. Variance relief is also requested under the C1 to permit insulation of two air conditioning condensers, basement entry enclosure, and setback and height to setback ratio variances for the two dormers subjects located in the R4B zone in the former Princeton borough. The subject lot is noncompliant with regard to the required 100-foot lot depth. The existing is 75 feet. It's not compliant with the required 6,000 square foot lot area, existing 3,374 square feet. And the existing house is noncompliant with the smaller side yard setback requirement of eight. The existing is four foot 10. It's not compliant with the 20-foot combined side yard setback. The existing is 11 feet 4 inches. It's not compliant with the 35-foot rear yard setback. The existing is 18.6 feet. And it's not compliant with the required three-to-one height to setback. And impervious coverage is also noncompliant with requirement 61 and 1/2. And the existing is 79%. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing front-to-rear gable roof and replace it with a gambrel roof. The existing attic contains two dormers that will be demolished and two larger dormers will be added. The height of the building will be increased but still comply with the 35-foot height requirement. The expanded attic will be used as a master suite. The attic dormer expansion requires a FAR variance pursuant to NJS 40,55D-70D4. Required FAR is 55.1. Existing is 58.11% and the proposed is 63.36%. This requires five affirmative votes of the board. The applicant should show that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the floor area that's larger than permitted by ordinance. Excuse me. And the expansion of the dormers and the proposed construction of the gambrel roof will require height to setback ratio variances and setback variances. The applicant also requests, requires setback variances for the two air conditioning condensers, the covered basement entry in the rear, and the height to setback variance for the expanded gambrel roof, as well as the setback of the existing gambrel roof are subsumed into the height to setback variances and the setback variances for the proposed dormers. Required height to setback on eastern elevation is three-to-one. The existing is, I mean, the proposed, excuse me, will be 7.83-to-one. The western elevation requirement is three-to-one. The proposed will be 3.75-to-one. The dormer setback in the, well, the side yard setback on the smaller side yard requirements, eight, the exist, proposed will be four feet 10. And the combined side yard setback of the dormer and the expanded roof requirements, 20, proposed will be 13 feet 2 inches. The air conditioning setback requirement is three feet. The proposed is two feet 2 inches. And the covered basement entry smaller side yard requirements, eight, proposed is six feet 3 inches, and the covered basement entry rear yard setback requirements, 35, and the proposed is 18 feet 6 inches. Applicant has requested consideration under the C1 criteria. That's a brief synopsis of the application. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I have one question. I don't know if this would be better answered by the applicant, but it appears that this home shares parking with the corner home on Van de Venner?
I believe, yes, that is the case, and the applicant can address that. You recall, we did see the Van de Venner home several years ago, and there was, I believe, an easement for a parking space, but I think the applicant can speak to that better than I can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just before we start the presentation, was this house reviewed by the Historic Commission?
No, it was not.
Okay, is that a, is that a in this area, is that voluntary?
It's in a suggested district. It's eligible for consideration as a potential historic designation. If the board wishes it to be reviewed by the HPC, they could refer to the HPC.
If I might just speak, Kevin Moore with the firm of Stevens.
Mr. Moore, excuse me, one sec. Let Mr. Bridger finish and then we'll start.
It was reviewed by the HPC, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Moore, please speak.
Yes, we had originally submitted to the HPC. The HPC is now not doing courtesy reviews of projects that are in potential historic districts.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yes, Michael?
Were you aware of that, Derek?
Yes, I was aware that the HPC did not review the case.
Oh, okay, but
I mean, the board can still refute. I don't think it's been outlawed. The board could still ask the HPC to review the case. It hasn't been publicly recluded, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Mr. Moore, you'll be representing this case?
Yes, I will be. I'm, for the record, again, Kevin Moore with the firm of Stevens and Lee, and I represent the applicant this evening, Ms. Eileen Bitterly.
Do you have any witnesses? I don't see any.
I do. I do. I have one. I have my architect, Mr. Jason Viaco, who is with me here and will take over my seat. And if you'll let, when that time comes, we have a PowerPoint, and if you'll let Kevin Moore, I'm coming in as Stevens and Lee, but I'm also on my separate laptop as Kevin Moore to share my screen from Mr. Viaco's testimony. I also have Mr. Alex Doherty with John McDonough and Associates, who is our planner. But I'd just like to do a brief introduction just to sort of set the stage, if you will. The applicant is requesting the floor area ratio variance, which Mr. Bridger alluded to in the bulk variances before the board this evening, to convert what's essentially an antiquated, multi-person rental property into her own home. As her architect, Mr. Viaco, will demonstrate in his testimony this evening, Ms. Bitterly will be enhancing the exterior appearance and quality of her home. She will also be changing the interior of her home from an antiquated, multi-person rental property to her modern, single-family residence. This will involve, among other things, a reduction in the number of small rooms to fewer large rooms, including a reduction from six bedrooms to four bedrooms. Ms. Bitterly will also actually, and Mr. Viaco will get into this, be reducing the height of the present building and the amount of impervious coverage on her property. It's also important to emphasize what Ms. Bitterly's renovation does not entail. It does not include any changes to the footprint of the house, and it does not include any changes to the exterior dimensions of the first and second floors of the house. Before we start our presentation this evening, I'd just like to make one point with respect to the FAR variance, and that is that the purpose of a floor area limitation in your ordinance is to limit the intensity of development. And in this application, Ms. Bitterly is actually reducing the intensity of the development of her property by reducing the number of bedrooms and occupants of the house, as well as decreasing the amount of impervious surface. And with that, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Jason Viaco.
Aren't we supposed to be seeing anybody's, everyone's face, or only applicants?
Well.
Well, we can see them. They're just very small, so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, Mr. Doherty, I see you now on a separate screen. Are you going to be on that screen?
Mr. Doherty is on a separate screen, and we are, Ms. Bitterly, Mr. Viaco, and I are here.
I see. I didn't, I was just looking at the name, and I didn't see.
Mr., who are we swearing in first, Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Doherty, if you could unmute yourself, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe so.
Mr. Doherty, can you give your educate? Mr. Viaco, could you give your education?
Whoa, 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 wait, Kevin, I think I just asked you, who do you want to swear in first? So, let me swear in now. That's okay. I will now swear, Mr. Viaco. Mr. Viaco, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Viaco, can you give your education licenses and professional experience for the board?
Sure. I'm graduate of Drexel University, Bachelor of Architecture. I hold licenses in both New Jersey and Pennsylvania, and I am the principal owner of Vetted Architects.
I would offer Mr. Viaco as an expert in the field of architecture?
We'll accept that.
Thank you. Mr. Viaco, can you start your testimony and begin with the description of the existing conditions?
Sure. I'll start with the exterior conditions. The current existing conditions are consistent with the vernacular style commonly seen throughout town. A straightforward rectangular-shaped, practical design with gable-style roofs, stone base, and horizontal siding. The home currently contains three dormers, two gable-style dormers, and one smaller-style shed dorm. The shed dorm appears to be an add-on and is not consistent with the style of the rest of the home. The current home also contains plenty of glazing located on all four sides of the dwelling. Around the outside of the home, there is an abundance of hardscaping of multiple different materials, brick, concrete, and wood. On the outside is also located an existing bilco door that provides a secondary access to the basement. Now, I'll move into the proposed changes, and I'd like to start with the interior. I provided a brief walkthrough through the proposed changes, starting with the outside, then the floor plans, and finally, the exterior elevations. On the outside, or site changes, will be the following. Removing much existing hardscaping and returning it to a grass lawn. Through the removal of these materials, we will be reducing the current impervious coverage by approximately 493 square feet, or 132%. Bringing the total impervious coverage down to 65.8 from 79.0, where 61.5 is the maximum provided by the ordinance. On the outside, we're also proposing a small roof structure to create an enclosure and place a bilco door to give Ms. Bitterly a more safe and convenient weatherproof access to her basement than the existing means of access currently. Jumping inside, there will be interior renovations to both the first and second floors. The nature of these renovations is return the home to a single-family use, from a rental use, which is currently, which is currently used as. Through the renovations on these two floors, there will be a reduction of one room on the first floor and one bedroom on the second floor. Moving up to the attic, there will be both interior and exterior renovations done to this floor. The nature of the improvements on this floor will be to turn a current two-bedroom space into a primary suite space, complete with bedroom, bathroom, closet, and sitting room. We will also be increasing usable space up on the attic level by approximately 196 square feet, while still staying completely within the existing footprint. To accommodate the added space and improve functionality of the existing space, two shed dormers are being proposed, flanking both the right and left side. The existing roof framing is not in good condition, with multiple members being both notched and damaged. Part of the proposed attic work is to remove the existing roof completely and build a new roof to current framing practices and code standards. The existing structure currently stands a little over the required 35-foot height requirement at approximately 36 feet. The new roof provides the long height of approximately 34 foot 10, complying with the 35-foot height ordinance. With these improvements in place, the home will now contain four bedrooms and three and a half baths, which is two bedrooms less and two less overall rooms in the current rental property. Turning to the outside and regarding the elevations of the dwelling, for the most part, the majority of the outside will remain the same, other than new siding and roofing. The front porch and all four sides will be existing to remain. The existing front porch will be existing front porch will receive new columns, round tapered in style matching existing columns, and a new roof, which will be standing seam metal in place of the current single roof. The four sides of the dwelling will receive new horizontal siding. The new siding will be a hardy plank from James Hardy. With the proposed work, there will be also new windows and window locations. It is also to be noted that the overall amount of exterior glazing has been reduced through the improvements, providing more privacy to both Ms. Bitterly and her neighbors. The bulk of the exterior work will be at the attic level and the new roof structure. The attic level will be formed within the new roof, which is designed as a gambrel-style roof. The new roof will also contain two new shed dormers that will flank the left and right sides. The new roof and dormers will stay within the current footprint of the home, not exceeding the current boundaries. The style of the new roof will be in line with a Dutch colonial-style home. The Dutch colonial style is one of the many styles seen around town, along with the vernacular style, American four-square, and Greek Revival. Some notable Dutch colonial-style homes in town would be 292 Witherspoon Street, 294 Witherspoon Street, and 168 John Street. All these previously mentioned homes can be found at the host office of historic preservation on the municipality of Princeton's website. All these previously mentioned homes have gambrel-style roofs, much in line with the proposed roof. The Dutch colonial style is a contributing style to the town fabric, as are the other styles. The proposed design of this house complements both the immediate neighborhood as well as the overall town fabric. The nature and driving force beyond all the improvements depicted on the drawings and listed here in my testimony is to turn the current rental property into a single-family home, while also creating a forever home for Ms. Bitterly.
Thank you, Mr. Viaco. Mr. Viaco, that completes Mr. Viaco's direct testimony. He's available for questions from the board, and it's professional.
Mr. Moore, is this part of your PowerPoint presentation? These slides we just saw, and do you want them marked?
Yeah, the whole, I think the easiest thing, Ms. Casey, to do would be to mark the entire PowerPoint presentation, because it includes Mr. Viaco's drawings, which are the drawings that were submitted, and then a series of photographs that Mr. Doherty has taken to list the whole thing as PowerPoint Exhibit A1?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Can you explain what those four drawings are across the bottom of this page?
Those are just reference plans that denote which elevation you're looking at. You know, the sides are numbered one through four. The front is number one, the right side is number two. The rear side is number three, and the right side and left side is labeled number four. So, they correspond to the elevation. So, on this sheet, you're seeing elevation three and four, which is the rear and left side.
Even, any other questions?
Again, I'm not quite the four drawings across the bottom of this page?
Yeah, the four drawings across the bottom are the four floors, first, second, third, and roof. And they're just showing you which elevation, they're just there to note which elevation you're looking at. They're just a reference plan.
Okay, thank you.
Even, yeah, they're just, those same drawings are on other sheets at a larger scale.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, any other questions of the applicant, of the attorney right now, the architect, excuse me?
Yeah, I just have one. So, the home, the height of the home will be reduced, not increased.
Correct. Through my field measurements, from the inside measurements, I got that the peak of the existing roof, the gable roof, is over 35 feet.
And what will the, and the new height will be 34 something?
3410.
Okay, and I guess it was a question because Derek's memo had noted that you were raising the height of the home.
No, we are not raising the height.
You know, it was they didn't submit existing plans. They did submit photos, so I don't know if it would help to see a photo of the existing house to visualize that roof.
Okay, I can actually do that. Hold on a second.
Thank you.
We do have some photos, and these are surrounding.
That's a good one right there.
There you go. The yellow arrow is the existing house.
And in that photo, you can see that the top ridge is clearly higher than her neighbors.
Really higher than the two-inch difference? You can see in this photo? Okay. That's rich. Okay.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Viaco?
Yeah, I assume that the, I mean, I walked by the home today, and as was portrayed in the pictures you distributed to us, it looks like it's been pretty well stripped down. So, was this done before you realized that there was zoning that had to be complied with?
It was, and I can speak for Mr. Viaco here, and if I get it wrong, you can correct me. But it's what we call exploratory demolition. We did obtain a demolition permit, and to continue the rest of the design of the home, we needed to strip it down to the degree that we did.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the architect or the attorney at this point?
Yes, Steve, Michael Floyd. Did this house have previously have a air conditioner or condenser? And if so, where was it located?
Yes.
You have to speak.
Well, you have to be sworn. I'd like to answer that question. I'd like to have Ms. Eileen Bitterly, the applicant, sworn by Ms. Casey.
Sure. Ms. Bitterly, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
And Ms. Bitterly, are you the applicant, and does your the entity that you control own the home?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bitterly, you can answer the question about the air conditioner condenser now.
The two existing condensers are currently located in the back of the house. So, in the, in the small backyard.
Okay. I didn't completely walk around the backyard itself, but I did go in the backyard. Whereabouts? Is it on the right rear?
The left rear. If you're looking right now at rear elevation three, Uh, the left rear. If you're looking right now at rear elevation three, the two condensers would be well, we're moving.
Yeah, trying to get it. See, no, it's not really very.
Well, there they are. I can see them.
Yeah.
They're down there to the left. Right next to
The bump out?
The bump out that is the back entrance now, but it's gonna just be the pantry. Uh, it's hard to see, but there's two little like white things down there through the leaves.
Okay. And I, I guess you, you just chose not to put it back.
The way it's designed, that's my, now that's my back door, so I can't get out of the house in the back with the condenser there. So I thought I would put it on the side and then shield it with a fence so that it wouldn't be visible to the street or to the neighbor's property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I have a question, but I think I'm gonna wait until we get a little further along to, to hear some of the other testimony and comments. So if there are no other questions of the architect or the attorney or the owner, Mr. Moore, would you like to move on?
Yes, I would like to call my third and final witness, uh, Mr. Alex Doherty. And I, he's here remotely, so if we could have him admitted.
I'm here.
Mr. Doherty, oh, you need to be sworn by Ms. Casey.
No, actually, I already did that initially. So he is sworn.
Alright, Mr. Doherty, could you give your education licenses and professional experience for the board, please?
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional planner, AICP, as well as state licensed PP. Um, my education center, Rutgers Flousing, with a master's in city and regional planning, a concentration in development and redevelopment, the certification of public policy. I've actually appeared before this board about a year ago. I was just in front of the uh planning board for the uh mall and the shopping center, I'm sorry, with the signed package uh about a week ago. Um, I'm a member of the
We'll accept you as a expert.
Thank you very much. Mr. Doherty, could you please uh provide to the board the planning justifications for the variances that we are seeing?
Certainly. Um, I think when we really look at this application, uh counselor, I think you, your opening statement, uh, really hit it on the head here. Uh, we're here before the zoning board. Um, one, because it's a uh, uh, you know, a residential, single-family uh uh application, but for purposes of the variance, um, before this board. Um, the big one here is the uh D four, the FAR, um, you know, not to belabor the board. Um, I think you hit it right on the head here. Um, the intent of the FAR variance, really, when we look at this, you know, uh, we do have an undersized lot. Have to be mindful, I think, um, wh- wh- when we talk about this application collectively in a holistic approach, you know, the, the structure's there. Um, a lot of these variances we have on the table as the um, the zoning officer outlined in his report, very thorough report in his opening remarks. There's, there's quite a few variances here, mu- much of which are existing conditions, really associated with the, the uh undersized nature of the property. But for purposes of this FAR variance here, um, and activating, you know, the, the upper floor attic space, if you will. I think it really is important to note when we talk about the criteria for the FAR and the intent of the FAR, um, really to be mindful of the massing scale and the intensity of, of, um, you know, sites and, and buildings in, in particular, whether residential or, or otherwise. Um, this project here, when we talk about the FAR, as you mentioned, we have two reductions in a uh, in, in the bedrooms. And we are lowering that roof profile, bringing this uh property, in, in my professional opinion, into a less uh intense manner, um, not just by way of the internal operations or guts of the, of, of the building. But also when we talk about, you know, from a rental to a, uh, uh, the single-family owner occupied or a single-family in general owner occupied, this, this, when we talk about reductions of the rooms, we can certainly um see this as a reduction in the overall requirements as, as well as, um, you know, for the, the demand on the property from, you know, the, the pedestrians, the residents that would otherwise live there, um, vehicles that may be associated with the increased bedrooms in that regards. Um, but when we talk about the FAR, um, it really comes down to the Randolph Town uh Center case versus Randolph Township. And, and when we talk about that, is can this site associate the increased FAR um, without any uh, you know, additional problems or, or associated negative effects with that? Um, so when we talk about increasing that, that attic space to a livable space, and can the site accommodate that additional livable space? In, in my professional opinion, I think the architect really outlined it well with reduction in the bedroom counts, lowering the profile of the building. Um, I, 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 I find it on good authority from a professional standpoint that we are certainly um less uh, um intensifying the, the property. And the property can certainly accommodate the increased FAR. Um, again, we are lowering that profile of the building, whether two inches. Um, we are lowering that. We are, um, as far as moving the, the the uh, um, property into more of a compliance standpoint, we're talking about a reduction of that, um, that thirteen point two percent of the uh, uh, previous coverage here as well. Um, I know we have a few new variances on the table when we talk about, um, just moments ago, the AC location and some interrelated C relief here for this FAR. Um, I would like to point out, as we talk about the uh, the air conditioning and, and handlers outside the condensers, um, it's required to be at three feet setback. We're at two point two. We're talking about eight inches um, over the permitted setback. We are within, uh, I think, important to note, the property boundary, um, but we're talking about eight inches, which um, as, as believe the applicant just testified to, you know, screening it and shielding that. Um, you know, the eight inches, I don't believe, even if you were to see them, would be measurable or perceivable from the public eye. Um, you know, we do have a lot of variances on the table. Again, a lot of these are pre-existing and certainly associated with the, the undersized nature of the property. For purposes of, of the undersized nature, the lot area required is six thousand. We're at three thousand three hundred and seventy-four. So substantially undersized. Um, the building footprint, again, i- it's, it's there, it's existing. We're really trying to modify the interior, bring this property um to a, a more rich character. The, the neighborhood has a vast um array of different housing s- uh, styles and, and, and types and scales and massings. And I think that exhibit pack that you have, counselor, in front of you, really outlines that, that variety, if you will. Um, so for purposes of, of the application, a lot of the relief, I will, uh, interrelated C relief here, I, I would really like to pose as a hardship, is if we had the additional lot area, um, you know, nearly almost double the size. I would hope to think that most of these variances would, would otherwise not, not exist, be non-existent. So when we talk about the uh AC handler, again, it's a very small lot. Uh, we're eight inches uh seeking that relief. Again, that's certainly uh hooked into um, the undersized nature. And as the applicant mentioned, um, reorganizing the guts of the house internally, having that door there, certainly the, the air conditioners had to be moved. Um, I think everyone here uh, from uh, you know, the applicant's team is mindful of the uh, of, of the neighborhood, of the tight fit here. Um, and, and respectful of, of that. As we, as we jumped on a earlier on, we talked about the, the shared driveway access. Uh, when we talk about that FAR, again, that the less intense use here, um, I think certainly when we look at that, we can certainly see that this, this certainly is not going to uh, um, exacerbate the conditions associated with the site. I think we alleviate that. Um, when we talk about the overall design of the house, um, I certainly think it is compatible. It, it adds value to the site, which is felt throughout the neighborhood. And, and, you know, from a planning standpoint, you know, really hooking onto this FAR, the importance of the FAR. Um, it is an undersized lot. We are mindful of that. And to, you know, to balance that, we, we are, you know, again, re- reducing the bedroom count, lowering that, that building profile and bringing this, this property and what I believe the architect was, was, was hinting at, a more historic, rich representation of the community uh collectively. Um, with that, I mean, I can go through all the existing variances. I know, um, they're, they're listed, but we do have a, quite a few on paper. But when we look at this and we step back, uh, we're not, we're not asking to, to create these variances. They exist. And I think it's important to know what variances we can alleviate. We certainly
Yeah, the, the board, the way Princeton handles things, we're, we only need to provide groups for the variances that we're actually creating a new. The uh, not for the existing condition variances, so just the ones that are the exacerbations. So the FAR and then the dormer setback variances.
Certainly. So we have that dormer setback variance, the eastern elevation. Again, this is outlined thoroughly in, in the zoning officer's report. There, it's a ratio of three to one. We're at seven point eight uh to one. We have the dormer height setback, western elevation, three to one. We're at three point seven. The dormer setback on the smaller uh side yard is eight feet. We're at four-ten. The dormer combined side yard setback is required to be at twenty feet. We're at thirteen uh point two. Again, I mentioned the air con, uh, air conditioner condensers. The setback is three feet. We're at two point eight, a deviation of eight inches. The covered basement entry for the smaller yard is eight feet. The proposed is uh, um, the required is eight, the proposed is six point three. The covered basement entry in the rear yard setback is thirty-five feet, and the proposed is uh eighteen point six. All of which, uh, when we talk about these setbacks, they're, they're certainly, um, when we look at their measurements, these would certainly be associated with that C one hardship here. And, and the existing uh building footprint associated with the, the structure. Again, the, the, the application before the board is really internal work and, and lowering that roof profile and making the best use of, of what otherwise would be an existing structure. And in my opinion, um, bringing that structure into a less intensive uh, um, standpoint with the reduction of those bedrooms. Um, for, for follow which, I would say that the criteria for the D four relief for FAR, for the site to accommodate the additional floor ratio is certainly met um, by the reduction of that bedroom and lowering that building profile, and, and otherwise approval would be warranted. An applicable um, C one relief for a lot of the setbacks related to design of the building. And I think when we look at this application, it brings with it many positives, uh, advancements of the, the missable land use law, particularly the purpose I for desirable visual environment, um, as this will certainly give the property a new, fresh look that will be complimentary to the, the community and neighborhood, and certainly purpose A, uh, protecting of the community, the overall welfare. And when we talk about that, again, this is a small site in an, in, in, in existing neighborhood. With that reduction in the bedroom counts, I think overall protects the general, the welfare of the community. We are not trying to put as many rooms in here as, as possible. In fact, very few applications are coming before boards with room, room reduction. So with that, uh, I would like to, um, you know, emphasize that this application brings with it many positives while respecting its limitations. And, and the criteria for D four would be met and approval would be warranted.
Um, Mr. Doherty, could you also just talk about the negative criterias, uh, both with, with respect to the D four and with respect to the C variances?
Certainly, for, for the negative criteria, and I do apologize for glossing over that, um, a lot of the negative criteria, when we talk about, um, the, the setback release associated with that C one, um, the building exists, the footprint exists, um, a lot of what we're talking about here would otherwise be absorbed. Um, and I think when we talk about the setbacks here and, 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 and the various design elements associated with, with the setbacks, um, having that less inten- intensive use here by way of bedroom reduction certainly helps mitigate any concerns from a negative uh impact. Uh, a negative standpoint here, uh, that would be otherwise detrimental. And, and when we talk about the overall project itself, um, this is a residential dwelling. It's permitted in the residential zone, and we are being mindful. When we talk about that, that D four um, criteria here, again, it really is can the site accommodate uh the additional FAR? And in otherwise, with that reduction, I would say it certainly can accommodate the additional FAR.
Thank you, uh, Mr. uh Chairman. That concludes Mr. Doherty's direct testimony. Uh, he's obviously here to answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, just for, just for the board's clarification, could either of your witnesses describe the approximate age of the house?
I believe it was built in nineteen oh one, so a hundred and twenty-three years.
Nineteen oh one. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'd like to see if the board, any of the board members have a question, but I'd like to ask a question now. And then, um, you, you talked in the initial presentation, Mr. Moore, and then I believe, uh, the architect as well as the planner talked about the reduction in intensity. And you talked about that in regard to changing six bedrooms to four bedrooms. But intensity of the development, in my opinion, also has to do with the bulk of the building. Just the physical size of it. And that intensity is increased with the two large dormers on the, I recognize you lowered the roof line by two inches, which is slower, but not visually. You won't notice that from the street. But the
I'm sorry, it's, it's more than thirty-five feet currently. The two inches, the thirty, the thirty-five foot is requirement. We're going to thirty-four-ten. The existing is over thirty-five feet.
Okay, but the issue is that you're lowering, yes, okay, so I'm, I stand corrected. But the visual intensity of this structure with the, with the lower, even with the lower roof and the two very large dormers, make this look like a three-story house. And the bulk of the house as viewed from the street and the neighboring properties, in my opinion, increases the intensity of development visually on the property. Um, which concerns me. Now, I, you know, I'd like to know, um, I guess, can you accomplish the same thing you're going to try, what you're trying to accomplish here uh, within the existing confines of that third floor? Without putting these dormers on. I'm concerned about the dormers. I think they have a, a visual impact on the neighboring properties and on the appearance. This house also sits up, the first level of this house is also up a number of steps from the street, which is different than the adjacent houses.
May I respond?
Please.
Uh, so the, the, there's a couple of points here I want to hit. Um, one is, you know, the, the way the existing gable sits, the only usable space is right down the middle. Uh, the existing dormers really don't provide any extra space, especially because the two side walls of the dormer are not a full height. They actually sit down, so they're, it's a bit of a head knocker when you walk in there. Um, two, the new dormers being proposed on the gambrel style roof actually sit back. Can you actually go to the elevations real quick? All my plans. They actually sit back a little ways, and they don't come all the way out to the front face. Yeah, that's good. And that, it was actually a design effort to try to alleviate what you're just speaking about, so they don't, they don't come all the way to the front face of the building, and it feels like it's larger in scale. So we actually set them back on purpose to try to alleviate that. You know, when you take into account the house to the left and the house to the right, you know, when you're standing down the street a little bit looking, you don't even see the dormers. You know, you see the profile of the gambrel roof as it goes up to the ridge. So that was done with intent to try to mitigate the overall size of the, and scale of the building. And, and you, the, to try to get the, the primary suite that Miss Bitterly is looking for, for usable space, the existing roof and existing dormers don't, don't zoom.
If I may just jump in, um, eh, to piggyback off of that, you know, when we talk about the scale and size and the intensity of this, uh, we are certainly not the biggest property, I'm sorry, the biggest structure uh in the, in the immediate neighborhood. Um, and, you know, for the, the size and scale, I, I think it's important, uh, when we talk about that, that we are not asking for a, a D six or, or height variance. In fact, we are lowering that, and, and we are staying within the confines of that existing building footprint. These, these dormers are certainly protruding past that um, elevation of, of, of those exterior walls. Um, so when we look at this, um, uh, you know, from, from an intensity standpoint, uh, I, and I, I certainly would not argue that this is the most intense or visually intense uh, um, property in, in the immediate neighborhood.
I, I, I'm not gonna take issue with that. I just think in context with the adjacent homes, I think this, this visually will be much larger. So that, that's what concerns me. Um, okay, I guess that was the only question I had. Board members? Go ahead.
Uh, so I, I just wanna uh confirm, we, we're, we're saying that it's being lowered and uh that it is over uh thirty-five feet. On the drawings, it says it's, it's a, it's about thirty-six. Is that accurate as the existing height? So it's, it's being lowered uh, one foot, two inches? Is that
Yes, yeah, based off
One foot, two inches.
That's correct.
I, I have a few questions.
Please.
What, what is the square footage of that, of what your proposed attic spaces? To, to make a master bedroom?
We'll have that answer for you in a minute.
I'm sorry?
We'll have that answer for you in one second.
Sure. Okay, and um, secondly, uh, as a rental property, how many units are being rented?
Miss Bitterly? This building?
I'm sorry?
It was it was a single-family house rental.
But how many occupants?
How many occupants? Is that what he asked? He has units.
Because where I was going with the question is, in effect, are you reducing um what would be called, you know, affordable housing units if there were several units uh available in this area, reducing that to a single use, uh a single you know, not affordable.
Well, actually, it was being rented to Princeton University students, so it's not really a family affordable housing.
Right, okay, all right. Uh, but now back to the uh square footage of the uh the attic space.
Yep, so the the raw space existing is five ninety-two, the raw space proposed is seven eighty-eight. But then there's calculations that you go through that Princeton has to reduce that.
Right, um, if you were to essentially um angle the roof somewhat more sharply, reducing that um uh F A R for the um for the attic. Uh, my guess is that you could reduce the visual impact somewhat by redesigning the roof. Um, I defer to the architects on the panel as to whether that's a reasonable uh perception and 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 possibility.
So but there there there's a there's a couple of points there as well. So one is, you know, the overall style and look uh was Miss barely, you know, we're looking for a Dutch colonial style roof. And when it comes to a gambrel, you know, from a structural standpoint, you know, it 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 kinda has the steeper pitch on the edges and it showers out to pitch to the ridge. So to to, I'd have to start really looking at structure to be able to make that steeper, but then you start to lose the look of that gambrel. When we get back into the same problem we had before, where we start to lose use, lose usable space.
Yes, you would use, that's the whole point, to lose some of that space in favor of diminishing the overall outside bulk look. This is the point uh, I'm trying to sort of deal with the point that raised by uh Chairman Cohen.
Or a a again, to 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 go back to the point I had earlier, those dormers were set back, you know, a third uh uh of the of the of the depth of the house. So when you take into the existing houses and vegetation, everything along the street, you won't really see them till you get rid on top of the house. So I mean, it it was done with intent to try to accommodate, you know, what you're looking for, to reduce the overall size massing of it.
Well, yeah, okay, George, any other comments?
Oh, that was all.
Okay, I think the, I think just one other comment, I think the gambrel roof uh inherently increases the the uh the mass of the roof. Um, I recognize you held it back, um, but the gambrel portion of the roof, I believe, put the front elevation back up on your screen.
Um, quote, front elevation.
Think you have to go up one sheet. Okay, the gambrel roof comes all the way out to the front facade. I recognize the dormers don't, but when you look at the the uh the pitch of the roof at the front, it it creates, in my opinion, a lot, a lot of mass.
From there.
That was it. That was all I had. Board members, any other comments? Okay. Um, Mr. Moore, the architect, the planner, the owner, do you have any additional comments or would you like to say anything else?
Well, I'd just like to say that if the lot, as to sort of follow on Mr. Doherty's testimony, if this lot were not undersized, notwithstanding the size of the house, we wouldn't even need to be before the board, we would not require the variances. And I think that um Mr. ViCo has shown that, and maybe we needed a perspective rendering, but that the, there's really not, that you're not gonna see that massing you're concerned about from the street. So those would be my concluding comments.
Okay, um, all right. Board members, if there are no other questions, and Mr. Moore, you're done with your presentation. We'll open this up to the, would you like to say anything, let's say, before we open it up to the public for comments?
No, I think we've, again, I think this allows, it takes what's basically an antiquated house and makes it into a home that's currently livable. And there are, as I think we showed in the planner slides, a lot of other houses with more mass in the same neighborhood.
And gambrel style rooms.
Yeah, and gambrel style roofs.
Okay.
And if we need to go through those slides again for the board, I can do that.
Well, let's let's get public comment and we'll see what, well, board members, would you like to see those again now? Or should we wait until we get the uh public comment first and then we can discuss it? All right, let's let's uh, let's open this up, nobody wants to hear it right now, uh we can do that later. But let's open it up to the public. Uh Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak beha- behalf of this application?
Um, do you wanna tell them to raise their hand?
Yes, if anybody does want to speak, they have to indicate saying by uh saying, raising your hand, which is, should be on the bottom of your screen.
Can you stop sharing your screen, please?
Yes. Thank you. So, is there anyone, Claudia?
Yes, one second, please.
Hello, um, is it, should I speak or?
Yeah, Mr. Hyde, if you're comfortable, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, sixteen Park Place um and nineteen Madison Street. Both are in the
Say that again?
Sixteen Park Place to Madison Street and nineteen Madison Street. I have three addresses in the immediate vicinity.
And sir, if you would swear or affirm that any testimony you may give this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Please, Mr. Hyde, continue.
Okay, um, I mainly have questions. I I had prepared comments under three minutes in length. But I think it would be better if I just ask questions, in particular because the the discussion prompted uh some additional questions. Um, I'll try to keep it brief. Um, am I allowed to ask questions or just offer my?
Yes, you you can ask questions.
Okay, so I wanted to go back to one of the questions that a board member um asked about, it was the permitting for the demolition. Uh, I mean, I walk by the site multiple times every day. Uh, there was a red sticker on the door. I I've renovated properties in the area already. Um, they almost all properties of this vintage have asbestos wrap around the pipes. Um, I never saw any environmental companies, I never saw any workers with personal protective equipment. I just saw a very rapid demolition. I called the construction department to inquire whether or not the permits were done in the correct order. Um, but I was unable to get any answers, so I wanted to ask the applicant uh if there were any issues getting permitting ahead of the demolition as required.
Yeah, you can answer that, I mean.
You'd have to ask my builder. It was, we went to the town. The construction official at the time has since retired, he knew exactly what was going on. It was all done with his approval, we did get permits and and then work stopped.
Was there a permit?
Yes.
Why was there a red?
Mister, Mister, Mister Oxey?
Yes.
Um, who is testifying at this point? I assume it's you, Mr. Hyde, at the moment, then we'll swear you in and then you'll be able to comment too.
Well, the the response was that there was an exploratory permit and then a subsequent demolition. That was fuzzy to me, forgive me as a layperson, but I I wanted to make sure that there there was some kind of violation posted on the door. I wanted to know the nature of it and my primary concern is, was there viable asbestos that was improperly handled? Uh, because in the other two properties I own nearby, both of them had it and it's very common in homes of this vintage. So I was concerned for the workers and the neighbors.
I can't answer that, I don't know. I don't know anything about asbestos.
We're not aware of any asbestos in the in the house and um Ms. Bitterly did obtain the permits for the demolition, so we're not aware of any uh and there are no open notices of violation with respect to the property, so.
Okay, I'll move, I'll move on to the next question, but I, you know, I I was just queering on the the question asked earlier by one of the board members, forgive me, I I can't remember which one, I'm looking at a telephone here, so. Um, okay, so the a lot has been said about the um converting it from a uh what you're calling a rental unit into a single-family home. Um, and the interior plans um show, show that type of a modification. Um, my question, and I guess this is for the board, is once the variances are granted for, if they're granted for F A R and impermeable surface and setbacks and so forth, would the applicant at a later date be able to go back and make it back into a rental um with larger square footage? Is that allowable? Is there anything preventing that? Um, since that seems to be a major portion of the um of the um rationale here?
We would certainly agree to a condition that it could not be. And those run with the land, so then neither we nor anyone else subsequently could ever uh convert it back to rental.
Mr. Moore, when you say, when you say that though, are you saying that would be a deed restriction? Or are you saying as a condition of these variances that it can never be rented?
Resolution uh under the law is binding on all subsequent owners of the property as well as on us, as you know.
Well, it is, except I just question the the ability of the board to permanently prevent the property from being rented in the future.
I I will just say, if I can, um from a from a prop owner occupied versus rental, um I think when we talk about the less intensity, it really does um really reflect the the amount of bedrooms, because that would be otherwise. The yield and 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 density, if you will, for for lack of better terms, I know density is really hooked to unit counts. Um, but when we talk about density, the the actual amount of bodies would be associated living in there. Typically, you know, you have two to a room, um so the reduction of two rooms would otherwise be a reduction. Um, you know, a- at a minimum of two individuals, you know, or or potentially four individuals. So from a less intensity, the rental aspect, though, when we talk about the character of the neighborhood and 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 that, we don't have that revolving door, we have somebody um who who, when we talk about, you know, residential family occupancies, this as we heard was a a essentially a dorm room uh for college kids uh at the nearby universities. But um, well, you know, from from an intensity standpoint, it's not so much the owner occupied versus non-owner occupied. It's it's familiarity with the neighborhood, respect for the neighborhood in in that regards, and and the bedroom count for um the overall intensity of of that smaller property from a four-bedroom, um which would otherwise be a six-bedroom.
And we, Ms. Bitterly was allowed to have up to thirteen college students in there, so this is a substantial people. So this is a substantial reduction uh regardless.
All right, just just, let's just take a step back again, so the question was asked and Mr. Moore, you advised the applicant is willing to agree to restriction on the variance to prevent what? Future rental or to prevent?
Not rental, because you could rent, you know, if Miss Bitterly, you know, left for a year or something on vacation. Be able to rent it to uh, but we we could agree to a restriction on the intensity of the rental.
Uh, Derek, is that something then that the town could monitor? Isn't that kind of difficult?
It's very difficult.
Yeah.
Why would one agent be the same town rules?
The gentleman answered the question, trying to make sure that the budget is not packing more people.
So perhaps, perhaps what we're talking about is a restriction on the variance that provides that the applicant can't no, well, Derek, ordinarily, wouldn't the applicant need variances to quote, add more bedrooms? Or would this all be considered internal?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, but.
They're not required. I mean, zoning deals with the outside, if you added a unit, that would require variance. But if you added bedrooms, you know, I probably wouldn't even see the application.
You could reconfigure the house, the interior of the house without any zoning approval.
So I guess, Mr. Moore, that's my concern. I understand your client is willing to agree to some type of restriction. The concern though is one
From, if if I may
How are we gonna enforce that, so?
If 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 they're pulling a building permit, whether it be electrical, structural, wouldn't that be otherwise reviewed by the zoning officer before it goes to building?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't review, if somebody has a large bedroom and they convert it to two bedrooms, it's not something that requires zoning approval. If you add another unit, then, you know, part, it would require zoning, would require variance.
Oh, well, square footage isn't the largest on the street, what's stopping any other homeowner from?
Yeah, I I don't know, is is your client making a comment or is she asking you something?
She's just asking me something.
Okay, so I thought, okay, um. So in response to Mr. Hyde's question, i- it sounds as if the answer is yes, the applicant could.
Yeah, we we could potentially, but I mean, my client's not putting all of this money frankly and hiring an architect and redesigning this house to go make rental property, her intent is to, it's the intent is for her to live here.
As well as reducing bedrooms.
Yeah, and we are reducing the number of bedrooms.
I, if if a condition were to be imposed, it just imposed it on the number of bedrooms, because in your town code, um section T ten B dash thirty-four two Oxbie standards, part D is to prevent more than two persons from occupying a single bedroom. So if there were to be
Township code, we have two codes, that's not the borough, you're in the borough.
I do apologize, I was working on occupancy.
But the 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 point, though, I think that Mr. Bridger made is that it's not up to us about what they do on the inside, we're talking about the outside. So, uh, Mr. Hyde raises a good question and a hypothetical question, it's not really a zoning question.
I did have one final question, which was, um, pardon me, it was my most important question in terms of, to me. Um, should should I state that now or?
Yes, please.
Have I worn out my welcome? Okay, um, so thank you. My number one concern, um, you know, you're probably aware that this is very close to Harry's Brook, it's very close, it's at the bottom of a hill. It's very close to at least one underground spring. Um, I'm very focused on stormwater management, I know that the town is as well. You know, there's all the discussion about the new utility being formed. And of course, we're seeing things like what happened with Hurricane Ida and what happened in Asheville, North Carolina. These codes were made at a time before the really scary stuff started happening and now it's happening all the time. So I'm really, really um focused on impermeable surfaces. I've never attended one of these meetings before. Um, uh, but after seeing what happened at eleven Madison, I'm probably going to attend all of them. Um, but um, they're in this, in this application, they're talking about needing um an impermeable surface variance versus let me finish. But they're showing that they're reducing it by tearing up the concrete slab in the back, thereby going from seventy-nine to sixty-one uh or, you know, seventy-nine to sixty-five when the limit is sixty-one. But they're kind of selling it, saying we're reducing impermeable surface. My question is, is it legitimate to include the concrete slab in the back in the existing conditions in impermeable surface or not? It's not a structure, it's a slab, the slab was in the twenty nineteen survey. But I don't know if that slab was correctly permitted in the first The slab was in the twenty nineteen survey, but I don't know if that slab was correctly permitted in the first place. I don't know if that slab is legal in the first place, right? So the question is, is does anybody know if the concrete slab in the back was permitted and legal in the first place? Because if it's not, it should be removed under any circumstances and not included in the existing conditions.
Well, the impervious coverage should have been in the application. Should have taken, should have taken into account that slab, if it exists now.
But what if the slab, what if was hypothetically, what if the slab, I'm just making this up, was put in the year before she bought the property illegally?
Well, let's let's deal with if the slab is, the slab currently exists now and it should be reflected in the impervious coverage. That's the first thing. If the impervious coverage is under including that slab, that's one thing. Whether it was put in legally or illegally, we don't know. But if it's currently there, uh, I guess we could check with the building office to see if they ever permitted that. But if they're under the allowable impervious coverage with that slab, then it shouldn't really be an issue because they could theoretically go back in and and get that approved.
But it's uh it's over the impermeable coverage with or without the slab, but they're saying, they're showing that they're reducing impermeable coverage in extolling the benefits of the plan when maybe the slab shouldn't have been there in the first place.
Honestly, that's totally a hypothetical without any support in the record. He has the burden of proof. I really think we should cut this off. I think it's nonsense.
Well, I mean, we'll we'll cut it off in a minute, Mr. Moore, but the issue is, it's very simple at this point, in my opinion, if it's reflected in the impervious covers calculations.
It is.
Then the, whether it's there legally or illegally, and I'm not saying one way or the other, that can be dealt with later. I mean, if it's
But isn't the new structure in excess of the 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 limit?
So, if if I may jump in here, there's two coverages, there's a building coverage and there's an impervious coverage. The building coverage exists, we're not expanding the building coverage, we're trying to reduce the lot coverage. And for purposes of whether it was permitted or not, this neighborhood is a tight packed neighborhood. If somebody was pouring concrete, the the town's just professionals, I'm sure would have would have gotten that call and that's would have been flagged. Um, and 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 I and I will concur to counselor's statement that these are hypotheticals and and the impervious coverage for that slab is calculated in here. We are reducing that impervious coverage by thirteen percent. We can't do anything about the building coverage. The building footprints existed, as we just testified to, for over a hundred years.
Yeah, and if I if I may add, we're adding no additional new coverage. So I all the coverage on the lot right now is existing. We're removing the, we're removing existing impervious to, you know, uh uh for the betterment of stormwater, because, you know, we we take that concern as well. You know, we try to do green methods, you know, carbon footprints, we look at all that stuff, but we don't want to burden the 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 existing storm management through the town by adding more coverage, which we're not. So we're doing our own diligence, trying to remove impervious coverage to bring that down, you know, in effect to help out with stormwater.
Thank you for your response.
Just to clarify two things, the applicant then does not need a variance for impervious coverage?
We do.
No, 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 wait a second. First of all, wait a second, there is no building coverage, there's only impervious coverage. If you add four hundred square feet of net new impervious coverage, you need to perform stormwater management. They're reducing the impervious coverage. It is a reduction in the impervious coverage. I looked through the records, I found no approvals for anything on this property ever. Um, they didn't get permits. And I'm I'm not talking about the current owner, I'm talking about as long as we have records. I did look on the GIS. The site appears to be the same for the last to two thousand fifteen, there was a concrete structure in the backyard patio. So it's not a variance when it's reduced, um, and it's not a variance in this case.
Eric, so they're reducing it to sixty five point eight percent, the max in the zone is sixty one point five percent?
Yes, ma'am.
But they don't need a variance?
They don't need a variance, they're reducing the existing impervious coverage.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you.
Okay, uh Claudia, has anyone else indicated they would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Oxey, Oxey?
Yes.
Mr. Oxey, we are just going to, um, first, if you're comfortable, could you give us your uh address, please?
Uh, we are at Six Park Place.
Alrighty, and I'm going to swear you in and ask you to swear or affirm that any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes, it will be truthful.
Thank you.
Do you mind uh projecting the slide I sent to you this morning?
Uh, you can show your screen, sir.
Hmm?
You can show your screen.
Uh, okay, am I able to share?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did it come up?
Yes.
Yes, it did.
Okay, uh. So this is the way we see it from the street. I listed three concerns. First one is along the lines of what uh Chairman Cohen pointed. The what we see from the variance requirements is that this is not really a dorm enlargement. It's a redesigning of a new third floor, converting it pretty much from an attic to a third floor. And two enlarged dormers are difficult even to see even from the side. Those enlarged dormers define the roof line. And I think Mr. Hyde indicated that there was a case on Madison Street less than a year ago. There was a flat roof. And the board rejected flat roof, it became dorms. So what we see on the right side of the slide is a basically a flat roof converted in elliptical shape. Now, you could call it whatever you want to call it. But point number two. It is inharmonious, both with Park Place as well as Madison. We walked around, looked at the existing buildings. If you focus on the left side of this building alone, what you see is dormers. You don't see flat roofs. You don't see almost a flat elliptical roof either. So I'm pretty much now um saying the same thing that Chairman Cohen said. Uh, it is changing the look of the original design. It's becoming a something that you don't even see in two streets nearby, Park Place and Madison. Third point is that I've checked the regulations. There's no regu- regulation that says a one family house cannot be used as a rental house to students, to another single family. Uh, you can do whatever you want once you own that house, provided you don't break the law. And municipality doesn't have anything against that. For the last five years, this house was used as a dormitory. It was purchased from a single family, very quiet. Uh, exactly what's being promised right now. The single family decided to sell it and move out of country, uh, move out of the state. And shortly after that, we started seeing uh undergraduate students from Princeton University with almost no control in their behavior. I'm a university professor here myself. If anything like that happens on campus, at least we could call the campus police. They would come. Ask them to keep quiet. Ask them not to give parties after hours. Uh, these students, and two of them were my own students from my department. Uh, they behaved because I
But I object to the relevance, uh, I, the the earlier testimony was relevant.
More, Mr. Moore.
Testimony is not relevant, so I
Can he, can he finish, please?
Well, I was trying to stop him from finishing because he's saying irrelevant things.
I think it, I think it's relevant because it disturbs the harmony residential atmosphere of a uh residential area in a place called Princeton.
Well.
Mister, Mister Oxey, are you saying your concern is that if the proposed design for the house is approved with the variances that in the future, if it's again used as rental, there'll be even more students living there?
Yes, yes. Presently, uh, I, somebody mentioned thirteen, I checked with the municipality when all these problems were happening during the last five years. I found out that you can have as many as thirteen students living in the old house.
Well, excuse me for interrupting you, but this is, they're proposing a single family house now, and that's what we have before us. If if at some point this changes and to a rental or they're gonna subdivide it and create apartments, it would require, I believe, Mr. Bridger, another application?
I don't think it happened when a single family moved out and sold it to the present owner.
Well, but right now, right now, the the application before us is to is converting this house into, back into a single family. So I think I think we should really focus on that.
But, Mr. Cohen, I think that Mr. Hyde also asked the same question. Are you saying that if you approve this present proposal, it cannot be converted to a rental home for students unless?
Mr. Bridger, can you comment on that? I I believe that the the form of ownership or rental is one thing, it's the idea of of creating a multi-family, I guess.
Um, and it could be rented as a, to a family of either related or unrelated people um tomorrow.
Can, it cannot be rented to students?
No, it can.
Oh, it can be.
Oh, yeah.
Can be. That's, that's what, that's the point I'm trying to make in the number three concern. That potentially now, we are converting this house if the proposal is approved, to potentially hu- a larger space to be a dormitory space.
Well, I I would just say that Ms. Bitterly is not going, spending the kind of money she's spending to turn this into a rental property. She's not upgrading it out to this extent. Students couldn't afford the rent?
Uh, I know that argument does not convince me. Uh, can we, can we convert our house?
Yes.
The street to a dormitory?
Yes. Oh, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. This exchange we're having at this point, I don't think is helpful. Uh, I don't think a dormitory, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, but I don't think dormitories would what what we would understand to be a dormitory would be allowed in a single family residential zone. So I, I understand, Mr. Oxey, you're concerned that essentially that was your perception of it, that it had so many students living there, it was not uh students living as a quiet, shall we say, uh, unrelated family of people, that it was very noisy and to you it seemed similar to a dormitory, but um I I'm correcting that, Derek, right?
I I will then, I will then ask you to check the number of complaints that the municipality received. Police department, fire department, uh, the C report and fix.
May I respond, please?
Yes, so, but let let Mr. actually finish and then you can respond.
Thank you.
So the point I'm trying to make, that we suffered for the last five years. And I don't see if this could happen or not happen again, that possibility is finite. And it's a concern to us, that's what I'm trying to express.
Dr. Oxey, one question, did you take the photo that's here in your slide?
Yes, I did.
Okay, um, I'm assuming you would like this to be an exhibit, so I would suggest we call it an objector exhibit.
Uh, yeah, what, you can't, I I don't know what the rules are, but
No, that's fine, that's fine, we'll 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 consider that is as your exhibit.
Okay, i- i- if I may, real quick, I'll I'll make this short and sweet. Uh, Mr. Oxey, we definitely appreciate you bringing these concerns uh up. I like to address your three that you have here in the slide. Uh, number one, uh, the the flat roof, the shallow pitch on the roof is a four on twelve, which is far from being considered a flat roof. Uh, the two large dormers, uh, they're actually, you know, set back off the front of the house that try to blend them in with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, number two, the inharmonious architectural design versus the rest of the buildings of Park Place, there are other houses on Park Place that contain a gambrel style roof. The Dutch colonial style is one of the known styles inside of Princeton, inside of the town fabric. So we're actually, you know, harmonizing with the accepted styles. Uh, number three, large dormitory, uh, Ms. Bitterly is trying to turn this back into a single family home, let alone, you know, her forever home. Uh, we're reducing the the not, the the number of bedrooms. And, you know, this, this will not be considered a large dormitory. You know, she she's reverting it back to from what it was.
And if I might, in your expert opinion as an architect, do you feel there's a uniformed style of architecture in this neighborhood?
No, there's there's a couple different styles throughout the street and the neighborhood.
So the basic style is a diverse, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
I don't see them in the picture that I took this morning.
They're a little further down.
Maybe he should look at his own house.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, um. Claudia, um, is it Mr. Oxey? Do you have anything else?
No, that's this though.
Okay, thank you. Claudia has, can you take your slide down, please? Um, Claudia, has anyone else indicated they'd like to speak on behalf of this application?
No, I don't see any more hands. Oh, wait, one second, wait, one second, somebody else just.
I can, can we take this slide down that's on now?
Not the applicant's slide, so.
Mr. Oxey, can you take your slide down, please?
Okay, just a minute. Uh, actually, I'll close the slide, yeah.
Thank you.
It's gone.
Wow, got bigger.
You still see it?
Why do you not see any other hands?
Okay. Claudia, is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Yeah, our our planner wanted to just uh provide a comment.
Well, wait one second, I just wanted to make, see if we have any other public comment.
There was a hand, but uh it disappeared. It was uh Mr. Delgado, one second, somebody else, he is back, one second. Is he there now? Can you stop sharing your screen, please?
I don't know who's sharing the screen, it's not us.
I think it might be Mr. Oxey.
Yeah, I think it is because it says you're viewing at the top. Mr. Oxey.
Sir, are you still there? Can you take your screen down? I think he's there.
Yeah, he's there.
No, I think, I think he is.
I can see him.
Mr. Delgado, can you show, put your camera on?
Mr. Oxey, you're muted, can you take your screen down, please? Mr. Oxey, can you take your screen down?
It should be, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, um. Okay, um, Claudia, did someone else wish to speak?
Mr. Delgado, he's trying to connect.
Okay.
Mr. Delgado, are you there?
We are.
I don't see him.
Well, it says he's trying to connect the audio, but we can't see him, but. If he connects to audio, we can tell him that.
I see, I see it's trying to connect. Well, we'll give it a minute more and then we're gonna have to, uh, move on here.
If we might, uh, our planner did have a response to several of the comments, if he could speak.
Let's just, let's just finish up, because I want to get, I want to get out of the public portion of the hearing and then, then he can speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just give it another few seconds.
Something's happening.
Oh.
Now I see his name and address, but I don't see him.
Like, for the last forty-five seconds, his name, and it says connecting to audio. It's been on the bottom of the screen, but.
What, what would be wrong with hearing the other comments while we're sitting here?
All right, I just, we can do that, if that's what you'd like. Fine, all right, um, Mr. Doherty, did you want to say something?
Yes, um, I, I did, and for purposes of, um, I, I just wanted to, uh, bring some clarity when we talk about the context of the neighborhood. Um, and I do have an exhibit packet, I, it is, when we talk about this, the idea of a three-story building, um, so.
Well, well, uh, Mr. Doherty, what are we looking at now?
This is just Google Maps. I have Google, uh, uh, Google Maps up, but I have.
Is this an, is this an exhibit, Mr. Moore?
These photos are in the exhibit, these, these properties, um, I can show the exhibit packet and zoom in if need be.
I, I can enter this as applicant's exhibit A2.
Okay, and can you describe me, what, what, what do you want this to be called then?
This is just the existing conditions of the neighborhood.
And did you take?
Selling existing conditions.
Okay, and did you, uh, Mr. Doherty, you said you got these from Google Maps?
I'm on Google Maps, these are the same photos I have in my exhibit packet, they, they, they're the same exact.
All right.
I just wanted to bring a little bit more of a closer perspective from, we talk about the scale and massing here. Um, we are, um, uh, in, in, in the, um, the zone, the, uh, R4B zone, and we're on that fringe zone, if you will, the CB, uh, B zone. But for purposes of that zone, they really start, um, at, pretty much at the intersection here of, of Park Place and, um, Vanter Avenue, and it kind of goes all the way in the back, but for the intersection here, which is our immediate neighborhood, this, this certainly has that three-story feel to it, scale and massing, the adjacent neighbor as well here. Um, and then when we kind of go down Park Ave, which is where the property is, is cer- certainly located, um, here, uh, the existing condition is the Google before the, uh, renovation and demolition started. But when we talk about Six Park with the dormers and the size, the scale and the massing, the architectural designs, the co- uh, the complexity of this neighborhood is, is certainly different, it's unique, there's a lot going on here architecturally and visually, scale and massing, but by no means are, is this property the big house on the block size in, in the perception of a three-story. Multiple structures here in our immediate neighborhood have that appearance of the three-story, and they are multifamily rentals on, 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 on that. Um, you know, when we talk about the three-story appearance here, this is essentially our, our neighbor, that this is the property in question here, that I'm circling. Our neighbor, adjacent on Park Ave, again, has that perception of three stories with, you know. Um, so, eh, for purposes of fitting in with the neighborhood and the character here, it is a variety of, of architectural styles, and certainly multiple properties have made efficient use uh, of that upper floor, um, and, and by virtue of design, appear to have that third floor, and, and that's really what I wanted to share here.
Yeah, i- i- if I may, just to add some very commentary, so. Mr. Doherty, can you bring that Google?
We're getting an echo here, somebody's got.
Yeah, we're fixing it. Apologies, sorry about that.
I just want to add a supplementary comment to Mr. Doherty's testimony. Um, you know, it, going with neighborhood fabric and consistency of style, you know, the other four styles I mentioned were in my testimony, a lot of these houses do blend into that style, except one. Um, you know, there is, you know, Six Park is at the parter from that style, and, and, you know, it is a different, you know, harmony altogether. Uh, but to piggyback on top of Mr. Doherty's style, there are houses on this street that do have a hulking three-story presence, and, you know, our, ours is not one of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moore, is that it?
I think I see Mr. Delgado now, are his public comments still open, correct?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, Mr. Delgado, could you unmute yourself?
There you go.
There you go, Mr. Great.
Okay, I think I may be unmuted finally.
Yep.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Delgado, I'm just going to.
I, I, I lost the audio on, on this, but I have.
We can hear you now, can you hear us?
Mr. Delgado, can you hear us? Guess not.
Oh. Yeah?
Mr. Delgado, can you hear us? Mr. Delgado?
Um, no, I cannot hear you, I'm sorry. Um, I've lost the audio for a while, uh, and I do not hear any, I have not heard anything in the last several minutes. I do want to wish, um, tell the board that I am concerned about the, eh, um, massive, the visual appearance of the project. Um, I think more than that, I, I'm very concerned about the FAR. Um, by eh, increasing the FAR, the eh, um,
Well.
Basically, the, the third floor is available for use.
Karen, can we listen to the testimony?
I, 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 I think you can't see because.
Allow more people to be in this house. Um, I would not agree with the characterization of this as a dormitory. Um, in a dormitory, you'd have some control over the, over the occupants. Um, loud, law, large parties going into the wee hours of the night.
Is this testimony, what are, what are we doing right now?
I'm concerned that there could be more of that.
There are fourteen of us spending time, listening, waiting.
Understand, Stephen, but what you're hearing, I gather from Mr. Delgado, are his concerns, so.
But he's not sworn in, so. He's not sworn in.
That's correct, but I mean, we usually swear people in because somewhere in their comments, there may be factual information they want to convey. But what I understood Mr. Delgado to say is, he's concerned. He's concerned about the appearance of the proposed house. And it sounds like he's done with his comments anyway, so, um.
Okay, so we're going to, I, I guess, well, we have no way of knowing if he's finished, but we're gonna assume he's finished because he's not talking.
Right.
Claudia, has anyone else indicated they want to speak?
There are no more hands.
Okay, um.
I think, I think because he was interrupted.
Well, he's muted now.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can't, we, we've got to wrap this up.
Yeah, good idea.
So, Mr. Delgado, if you can hear me, we're going to close the public portion of the hearing and move on.
Before you close, we just do want to clarify, since there was all this concern, that the only occupant of this house is going to be Ms. Bitterley.
Fine, before we go into executive session, Mr. Moore, we'll give you an opportunity to make a closing statement.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, all right, um, we're going to close the public portion of the hearing now and, uh, move on to executive session, but before we do that, uh, we'll allow the attorney and the applicant to make a closing statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say that notwithstanding what's been, uh, said here today, this is a vast improvement over what exists. Ms. Bitterley is using this as a single-family house, home, with the amount of money that she is putting into these renovations, she's certainly not going to rent it out to a bunch of college kids. And I think that both our planner and our architect have shown that the size of the dormer on the third floor is well within the neighborhood scheme, and the standard of review here is for the FAR variance is whether the property supports, uh, any problems associated with the FAR variance, and I think we've made that argument. So I thank you very much for your time and pay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, we're going to go into executive session to discuss this.
Chairman Steve?
Yes.
Before we go into executive session, I, I do have one question for the applicant.
Sure, Michael.
I could, um, and it, it sort of relates a little bit to people's concern about ball, but whatever. I, looking at the plans, there are both master bedrooms on the third floor and the second floor. And, and you have clearly represented that the third floor is being expanded because the owner wants to live there. Um, I just want to confirm that that's again true, and the fact that there is a master bedroom on the second floor, she's not going to use that.
Ms. Bitterley?
Yeah, okay, so both of those rooms were labeled as master mainly because they're en suite, they have the bathroom inside.
Yes.
The room, and that gives more flexibility for use. I do have an eighty-four-year-old mother who spends a lot of time with me, and I have a young adult daughter who now has graduated and moved to Hoboken, but likes to come home to Princeton. Okay, so those are my other occupants, and they're not full-time. It's just me and my dog. That's it. And there is no way I'm renting anything out while I live in that house, but I do not feel that I should be under any other constraints than any homeowner in Princeton as to what you do with your house, so anybody on the street could decide to move out and rent their house to people. Eh, it's their prerogative, and I'm not planning to do that, I'm planning to live in it. And I'm putting a lot of effort into a well-thought-out design that I do not feel is overbearing or bulky or whatever compared to a lot of the other houses. Um, I'm trying to be pretty or, 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 um, thoughtful to my neighbors, the two on either side of me, which apparently have no issues with it because they're not present and, and objecting, and I think that the main reason from the objectors tonight is all about the rental. Well, I'm doing away with the rental. It's quite obvious. And the capacity that a rental is allowed to hold does have a direct correlation to the number of bedrooms. And now I'm reducing that by a third. So, so, yes, I still have rooms, one room, eh, one of those bedrooms is going to be my office. This is not a large house, so it, 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 it baffles me that I'm hearing how bulky it is. It's, it's a very modest house, especially in, in comparison to all these large dwellings that are on the street, whether they're duplexes or not. Those are large houses that stand taller and look much wider than this house. So, I don't know what else to say, but it's, it's a house, literally, it's my dream house, designed by me for me. The end.
Is that it, Mrs. Bitterley?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Moore, anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board members, do you want to ask any questions of the applicant or any of his witnesses right now? Okay, so, let's talk amongst ourselves theoretically and, uh, try to come to some conclusion here. Comments, please? Yes.
Sure, um, so the, the way that I'm looking at the interior, um, alterations, it's, it's just under two hundred square feet that are being added. Um, and a reduction in bedrooms. A lot of that square footage seems to be going into, um, larger bathrooms. It's, it's not going into bigger bedrooms. Uh, so it, it seems to me that it is actually a less intensive use in terms of the number of occupants that would be in that house, if, if that's what the, the neighbors are concerned about. I understand that the appearance, the visual appearance and, and, um, bulk to some is a, is another matter, but, um, I, I can, I can support this, uh, you know, based on, um, that a, 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 amount of additional square footage.
Thank you.
I agree, I agree, I, when I look at it, it seems to be adding to the neighborhood, not extracting from it, it's, we're not looking to build neighborhoods that all look alike, these are, others are different, and I, I think this is a nice design and it looks good and they're, you know, you have to take the owner for her word, and I do, and it is a modest house. Castle, so I, I, uh, support it.
Uh, yes, George?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, initially, I was concerned about the, the bulkiness of the, adding the, uh, the shallow angle of, of the roof. But frankly, the, uh, description of other, the pictures of other buildings on that street, um, I do, do not see it, that as a problem, I don't, don't see it as overwhelming anything on that street compared with what's already there, and so I, I definitely can approve this.
I, I'm, I am in agreement with that as well, it, it doesn't seem, eh, I mean, it, it does seem like it's easy to be suspicious of people because of things that have happened in a neighborhood or what maybe could happen, but I don't think that's really our place, and I, I, I would be ready to, I'm ready to move to approve this.
I would second that if the motion were to happen now and defer to other board members for their comments.
Right, I, if anyone else wants to comment, Michael, it looked like you wanted to say something, maybe?
Oh, thank you, Lee. Um, yeah, I agree, I was not hung up or finding any unacceptable bulkiness. I do, you know, go back judging the FAR on intensity of use, not any perceived bulkiness, and I think the use.
not any perceived bulkiness, and I think the use is being de-intensified. Um, I, I don't have a problem with the dormers. They don't extend farther than the footprint of, of the rest of the building. Um, and, um, those are my comments, and it was never a dormitory as zoning code defines dormitory. Um, so I, I think that's really irrelevant.
Okay, um, I stand by my earlier comments. Um, if someone, if there are no other board comments, if someone would like to make a motion?
I think Eve already did.
Um, well, I, I will say that I, I am making a motion now to approve this.
I will second it now.
All right, and the
Who, who seconded it?
Tenenbaum.
Tenenbaum. Um, so for both you, Eve and Harlan, uh, your, your motion and your second is that the, uh, variances other than the FAR would be based on, um, hardship, the size of the lot and the, the dimensions?
As, as stated, yeah, as it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And who, and Harlan seconded? Okay.
Yep.
If there are no, no additional comments on the motion, Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
No.
Thank you.
I believe the motion passed.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, very much.
Okay.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
You too. Okay, um, would you guys like to, you people, would you like to take a break for a couple of minutes before we go on?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it is, um, it is nine twenty-three. Uh, how about five minutes? Okay, nine twenty-eight, we'll be back in service. Thank you.
Mr. Tudaro, who do you need, uh, move over?
I'm sorry?
Do you need anybody from the, um, who's your witness or?
Yes, so I will have, uh, Melissa Friedman Steele.
Melissa, Melissa, let me find her, hold on. I found her.
Okay, we have Benjamin Grace.
Benjamin Grace.
James Kaiser, John Hanson.
Has everybody moved over now?
I believe so, and I'm actually just scrolling through the attendees real quick just to make sure that we have everybody. So we probably also want to bring over Joshua Zinder, Kelly Osuch.
Hold on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Claudia, no, no to Josh.
You can put me back.
Yeah, you, you can put him back as the attendees.
Oh, okay, you don't need Josh?
No, I've well, we always need him just for different things, right?
Okay, so who else will need to move over?
We have everybody. Thanks, I thought, yep, yep, and like I said, we could just move Josh back to the, the attendees.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Steve, are you in Princeton?
I am. I am. I'm cold in my office.
Wife got, got home from the meeting at the Jewish center about an hour ago.
Oh, did she? Yeah, my wife went for a few minutes after her earlier engagement.
Were there a lot of people there? You know?
Yes. There were, and then there were, they said forty-eight people on Zoom.
Wow.
Yeah. So it was nice. It was, I think it was a very good evening. At least when, when I was there.
I wonder if it was recorded, and I wonder if it was, if I would ever find the time to watch it.
Okay, it is nine twenty-eight. Um, I believe with the exception of Harlan and Bernice, we're back. We'll give them a minute more. There's Harlan. And we'll give Bernice another minute. Okay, neither Bernice or her cat are back. Haven't seen the cat in a while. Um, all right, let's, uh, let's start again and, um, well, let's wait. I'd just rather wait till she, give her a little, another minute. Okay, let's see. Okay, thanks Bernice, we were waiting for you. All right, but we lost Eve. Oh, there she is. Okay, we are back in session. Um, our next case is Z twenty-four dash six thirty-four, five forty-three Riverside Drive, Lot fifty-nine oh-two, Lot Two in the R, R five T-zone. Um, Karen, do we have all the proper documentation?
Yes, the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Derek, can you read us your memo, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, Melissa Nancy Friedman Steele and Michael David Steele are the owners or the applicants for five forty-three Riverside Drive, um, seeking C-one and C-two variances to permit the construction of a motor court garage, in exception to the required lot width, uh, for the motor court and front yard setback for the proposed garage driveway width and minimum length of a side-facing wall. Properties located in the R-five T-zone in the former Princeton Township. Um, well, it's Princeton, but it's in the former Princeton Township code. Um, the property is not complying with respect to the required fifteen-foot side yard, the existing fourteen-eight. The applicant is performing alterations in additions to the existing house. The first-floor scope of work includes the addition of a motor court garage to the front facade and a rear addition, which will provide a new location for a larger kitchen and great room. A new portion of basement is being added under the proposed rear addition. The existing front-entry garage is being converted into a guest room. Um, second floor is being altered and expanded on the southern elevation with two new, two new dormers, which will enlarge two existing bedrooms. Uh, the applicant is widening existing driveway to provide access to the new motor court in exception to the maximum twenty-two-foot permitted driveway width. The proposed motor court encroaches into the proposed prevailing front yard setback. Um, and the motor court addition does not comply with the minimum length of a side-facing wall. Uh, the following variances are required. Section ten B two fifty-five point two, minimum lot width for a motor court is a hundred and twenty-five feet. The existing lot width and proposed is one hundred feet. Um, section ten B two fifty-two point one prevailing front yard setback, uh, the prevailing is fifty-six feet. The proposed setback is fifty. Um, again, section ten B two fifty-five, or excuse me, two fifty-two C, two C, um, the minimum required length of a wall, uh, if a wall goes more than forty feet, it must either go in or out by a two feet, and it must have a minimum wall length of eight feet, and the proposed is four point four, four-two. And then there's finally, um, the maximum driveway width in accordance with ten B two fifty-five point two, I three D, the maximum width's twenty-two. The proposed is thirty-five, and, uh, that's a neighborhood character ordinance, as is the minimum, um, wall length of eight feet, and also the motor court, um, lot width, uh, motor courts were all part of neighborhood character, so most of those are related to that neighborhood character, um, which enabled motor courts to be constructed when they previously were not allowed to. Um, so now we have, uh, everything's, they're requesting consideration under this, both the C-one and the C-two. If you have any questions, I'd try to answer them.
This is, this is considered a motor court because the side-facing garage and the drive in front of it is all considered motor court as opposed to driveway?
Well, it's, motor court is, relates to the orientation of the garage to front inward to a court in front of the house, so, um, if, if it was a side-facing garage, otherwise it was part of the building would have to be set back eight feet from the front facade, just as front-facing garages have a setback of sixteen feet. The code does allow the garage to extend from the front of the house under the motor court, but it does require that lot width of a hundred and twenty-five feet and, uh, and the, and the, the others are just setback variances for the fifteen.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, who will be representing this case?
I will kick it off. So, thank you, Chair Cohen, members of the board, just for purposes of the record. Anthony Tauri, a fake red drinker, bid on reef. All we have, the applicants, Melissa Friedman Steele and Michael Steele. So just thank you, Mr. Bridger, for that thorough review, your October seventeenth memo and this application. I just wanted to provide some additional context before presenting our first witness. So the subject property here is a, a zero-point-six-one acre parcel situated in the R-five T-zone. The existing improvements on the property include a two-story, single-family home, paved driveway. Uh, the, the property has street frontage along Riverside Drive and is located approximately a hundred and five feet from the intersection of Riverside Drive and Prospect Ave. And so as Mr. Bridger just alluded to, uh, we're here tonight requesting bulk variance relief to renovate and enlarge the existing residence, uh, as well as construct other ancillary site improvements with the intention of making the property the applicant's forever home for their young family. In fact, this project presents an opportunity for the applicants who will be the next generation, hopefully, to move into and grow with this property. And so what I mean by that is that the existing home was built by the applicant's grandparents in the sixties, and her dad grew up with the property. So it remains, uh, with the family in trust, but has been unoccupied for more than four years. And the applicant, applicants here are proposing to revitalize the property in a manner that will accommodate their family while retaining much of the existing structure. And so here tonight, to provide some testimony in support of the application, we have, uh, the applicant, Melissa Friedman Steele. We have Benjamin Grace of, uh, Joshua Zinder Architecture to obviously provide our architectural testimony. Then we have James Kaiser and John Hanson of A, AK RF, who will be providing our our engineering and planning testimony, respectively. And so all of our witnesses tonight are appearing independently. It should have their own screen. So just as a matter of housekeeping, I'm sure the board would prefer that we have all of our witnesses sworn in at one time or separately as they present.
Anything, Karen?
It's fine. I think we can do them all together.
Okay.
Um, so we have Mr. Grace, Mr. Kaiser, Mr. Hanson, and the applicants, uh, Ms. Friedman and Mr. Steele. Did I miss anybody? No, sorry. Um, and so I ask all of you, do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so with that, I would just ask, if there's any questions of may by any of the board members, I will just ask to, uh, present our first witness.
Proceed.
All right, I see. Um, Freeman? How are you? And could you just, uh, uh, introduce yourself again just to the board?
Sure. Hi, I'm Melissa Friedman Steele. This is my husband, Mike Steele. I'm here also sitting out with my parents, Barry Friedman, and my um, over there, so I can't everybody else, but I wanted everyone to know that they're, um, here with us today.
Great. And so could you just, uh, give the benefit, uh, the fourth benefit of, of explaining a little bit more as to what you want to accomplish by this project?
Sure, thank you. Uh, and thank you, members of the board, for hearing our application this evening. We would really love to move to Princeton and specifically five forty-three Riverside Drive because this home, as was mentioned, was built in the nineteen-sixties by my grandparents, Ann and Joe Friedman, and it's the home that my father and aunt grew up in. So in a sense, I also grew up in this home, frequently spending time with my grandparents throughout my childhood and up until my grandmother's passing in twenty-twenty. My parents, my siblings and their families, my aunt and uncle all live in the Riverside and Littlebrook neighborhoods, and we would like for our daughters, who are four and one and a half, to be able to live in that, uh, area as well. We've spent the last few years thinking about how we could make my grandparents' house our forever home, and in order to do so, the major issue that we keep running into is that the existing garage can't comfortably accommodate two cars. It never has. And the best design we've been able to come up with, with the team at Joshua's Under Architecture and Design, would require several variances. We would much rather renovate this home than tear it down or, and build something from scratch or look for another house in the area to move to. We're excited about the possibility of this renovation becoming a reality and joining the Riverside community, and we've proactively gone and met the neighbors to introduce ourselves and also talk about our plans. And we appreciate in advance your consideration of our request for the necessary variances today. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you. That's all we had, unless there's any questions.
Board members, any questions of the applicant? Okay, continue, please.
Great. As I said, I would like to call Ben, oh, there we go, Steve, and I'll tell you what, just, uh, could you just introduce yourself for purposes of the record?
Sure, my name is Matt Benjamin Grace.
And, um, could you just, uh, give the board the benefit of some of your credentials and qualifications?
Yes, I have a Master of Architecture degree from Syracuse University earned in two thousand and ten. Uh, I've been a registered architect in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, I've been a senior, I'm a senior associate at JZA and D. I have worked here in Princeton at JZA D since two thousand and thirteen. Uh, while here, I have prepared or presented numerous presentations to boards and organizations, including most recently.
We'll accept you as qualified as a professional.
Okay, thank you. All right, can you just, uh, explain to the board your involvement with this application?
So I am the project architect, uh, involved with the, with, with the project overseeing the design of the, uh, additions.
All right, and you've personally designed, uh, prepared the architectural plan sheets that have been submitted for the application?
That is correct.
And could you provide just an overview of that design? And whether we?
Sure, I'm going I'm going to share a, a slide presentation. I'm going to share a, a slide presentation, uh, as I do that.
Mister Tadaro, would you like this marked as an exhibit?
Yes, please, so this is the, what we'll be pulling up is this is the, uh, uh. PDF exhibit that we provided to the board in advance of the hearing, um. Unless you think differently, Ms. Casey, I would suggest we just mark this as one exhibit.
That's fine, do you know how many slides you have?
Fifty.
Fifty, okay, thank you, we'll make that exhibit A one.
A one, thank you.
Shall I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll, I'll do my best to, to reference the, the slide numbers as I, as I go through the presentation, but they, they're visible at the bottom left of the screen here. This is page one, here you just see an existing picture of the, uh, the front facade of the building. Uh, of five forty-three Riverside Drive. So here at slide two, slides two through five, I'm just going to provide a bit of context, we're here in the Riverside neighborhood of Princeton. Uh, the subject property lies, uh, south of Route twenty-seven and north of Prospect Avenue on the east side of Riverside Drive. There are, uh, five properties on this side of, uh, the, of the street on this block. And the subject property is the second property north from Prospect Avenue. Uh, this is within the, as been stated, the R five T zone of the former township, here you see a map view. Uh, and here is a, a, an aerial view, you can see here that the, um. The properties on the street address. Are not perpend, or the front facades are not perpendicular to Riverside Drive, the, the. The houses are really perpendicular to the side blot lines and address Riverside Drive at, at an angle. Um, and here is a, is a, uh, bird's eye view of the same property. Here on, uh, page six are some existing images of the property. Uh, the existing structure is a two-story wood-framed, single-family house with a basement, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths. Originally constructed in nineteen sixty-four, uh, there was a one-story addition containing a great room. Uh, and a rear deck added to the house approximately in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, here, uh, the images on the screen, you can see on the top left, the, the front of the house again, you can see how prominent the garage is and that. This, uh, front view of the house. Uh, the top right, you can see a rear view of the, the later addition of the great room and the deck in front of it. Uh, the lower right is a, a wider view of the rear of the existing house. And, uh, on the bottom left is just a view of the southeast, uh, elevation, um, of the property. So here, uh, slide seven is an architectural site plan, just to orient you, orient you that this view has been rotated, you can see. Uh, at the bottom right of the, of the drawing, the, where the north arrow, which is directed to the top left of the page. So we see the existing building, the existing, uh, driveway leading up to the building, there is a small. Paved area to the right of the driveway leading up to the front door. There is also an existing patio at, at grade at the rear and an existing elevated deck at the back of the property. And we have highlighted, there's a, a dash dot line, uh, identifying the setbacks. Uh, the front, the fifty-six foot, uh, mean prevailing front yard setback is identified. Uh, also, just as reference, the twenty-five foot, uh, which is the base zoning setback, uh, for the R five T zone. And the fifteen-foot yard, uh, side yard setbacks on either side and a fifteen-foot rear yard setback at the top. So. I'd like to say that the reason we are presenting to you today as Melissa introduces, uh, is, is the garage. Um, all four of the variances that we are requesting are related to, uh, the issue of the garage. Um, here you can see the location of the existing garage in plan at the bottom left of the building. So the existing width, interior width of the garage is just over nineteen feet. It's narrower than you would design a two-car garage today, and a, a two-car garage is a, a necessary component of the, the, the house for, for this family. If you were designing a, a garage, ideally it would be twenty-two feet minimum width, uh, or, you know, if, for families loading and unloading children from vehicles. You really want that to be, dimension to be closer to twenty-four feet, so the existing garage is significantly narrower than desired and not really practical for a. Family who will be unloading and loading children from cars. I'd also like to point out, uh, the existing non-conformance of the current. Uh, location of the garage with respect to the neighborhood residential, the current neighborhood residential design standards. Uh, if I pop up the. The, uh, excerpt from the municipal code here with the, the diagram from the code. You can see that the requirement for a front-facing, front-entry garage facing the street is that it be set back sixteen feet. From the prin, principal structure's facade, while the existing condition is that. The, uh, garage actually protrudes seven feet in front of the primary facade of the building. So, in looking to provide a wider garage design, we evaluated a few concepts. Uh, one would be to expand the existing garage in place. Now, there are constraints in place that really prevent that from being a, a feasible solution. And this example, expanding to the west would mean that we were encroaching into the side yard setback. We'd also be abutting against, uh, a sewer easement, and we would be expanding a non-conforming condition, so this solution was deemed to be not feasible. Similarly, for expanding it inward to the lot into the house, we would still be expanding a non-conforming condition, making a garage. Front-facing garage more prominent on the streetscape. And also it would require significant structural modifications to the existing house and found, and basement and foundation. So the concept we are presenting, we have submitted for and are presenting to you tonight is to build a new. Uh, motor court garage addition which orients. The garage toward the interior of the lot and locates the garage, uh, in front of the principal facade of the building. As you can see at the bottom right of the screen here.
And so Ben, I just want to stop you there, just real quick, um, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly and just. Boards edification, the new garage addition that we're proposing. Uh, would comply with the bulk standards and, uh, eliminate an existing non-conformity, is that correct?
So, I will identify for you the, the, the non-conformity. Um, well, it would eliminate the non-conformity of the location of the garage in front of the principal facade for a, uh. For a street-facing garage entry, yes.
Alright, thank you.
And here you can see the, uh, resulting proposed architectural site plan with the garage addition at the front of the building. Uh, we do show that the bottom-left portion of the garage is encroaching beyond that fifty-six foot. Mean prevailing front yard setback, uh, I'm focusing primarily on the garage addition here because that's. Where the source of these four variants requests, there is, as was described previously, there is a kitchen addition. At the rear of the prop, at the rear of the building as well, with an expanded new elevated deck. Uh, there is also an expansion of the second floor, it's not shown on this plan, I'll show you in the, in the later images of the floor plans. So I, I do want to highlight, uh, the, the, one of the primary variance requests, which is, uh. The lot width for a motor car garage, so the applicability identifies a one-hundred-and-twenty-five foot. Uh, minimum lot width for a motor car garage, and we were, are requesting a, a variance from that app, that, uh. Width requirement, as the subject lot is one hundred feet wide. I do want to point out that all the other, we are complying with all the other design provisions for a motor car garage in this application. And I'll identify them briefly here, uh, must be, it can maybe be located in the foremost portion of the dwelling, we're, that is where we are locating it, that complies. Uh, the garage shall be oriented towards the interior of the lot and not the street or the side of the property, again, we will, I'll comply with that. The garage shall be limited to parking for three vehicles, we are only proposing a two-car garage, so that complies. The garage shall be no higher than a one-story, a maximum of twenty-five feet measured to the roof peak. And the, or the height of the principal structure, whichever is less, we comply, the gar, the garage structure is only one-story, fifteen feet approximately to the peak. Uh, and it is shorter than the existing structure. The garage shall not contain habitable space above, and we comply with that, it is only a garage structure, no habitable space above. Uh, and the bottom of the roof eave shall be no greater than twelve feet above the average finished grade, and we comply there as well, it is ten feet above grade approximately. From there, I did want to identify that our office did a survey of properties in the Riverside neighborhood, so primarily east of Harrison Street and south of twen, Route twenty-seven. Uh, and we identified at least twelve other properties in this area, which we felt met the definition of a motor car garage. On lots that are less than one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet in width. Including the immediate neighbor at five fifty-one Riverside Drive. So, again, I want to emphasize, these are not just motor court garages, but these are motor court garages. On lots less than one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet in width. And the intent here is just to identify that, so the plurality of these. Uh, motor car garages is that this is not an uncommon condition in this part of the municipality for what we are requesting. Uh, so here I pay, on slide twenty-two, I'm just, I'm going to briefly walk you through the proposed plans. This is the, or existing and proposed plans, I should say, this is the existing basement. Uh, with the dash line indicating at the right, uh, left of, indicating the existing garage. And, uh, the dash line at the top exists, the existing, uh, great room structure above. This is the proposed basement floor plan with the addition at the rear of the property, uh, which is, will be a family room at the basement level. And a stair from grade down, exterior stair from grade down. And here you can see the footprint of the proposed, uh, new garage at the front of the property above. Here is the existing first floor plan. And the proposed first floor plan with the garage addition at the front. Uh, the existing garage will be converted into interior living space. Uh, and actually, the, there's the portion of the garage, the portion of the structure, which is the garage doors will be cut back. To align prime, with the primary facade of the building, and you can also see the addition at the rear of the building. Which is for the new kitchen and expands the existing great room. Here I would also like to point out for your reference, the wall length that has identified in the, uh, the variance request for, uh. For wall length, uh, the, this space between the existing primary facade and the. Uh, garage sidewall. Uh, is four foot, five inches lo, long, now the, the, uh, residential. Design standards require a minimum wall length of eight feet there. Um. The reason for the reduced length is to limit the degree to which the garage encroaches beyond the mean prevailing front yard setback. The client, I think, would prefer to comply with that eight-foot requirement and have the garage. Uh, extend further beyond the front setback, but we felt, uh. That was more prudent to limit the extent to which the garage extended into the setback than to try to avoid the variance for wall length at this. Area. Also show you the existing second floor plan here. And the proposed second floor plan, which you can see the extension of the, the bedrooms one and two marked on this plan with the dormers out. To the right of the plan. Here we see the proposed front elevation, I showed on the, this elevation, the height to setback ratio line. From plane, coming from the right side and showing that the proposed dormers. Uh, so the bulk of the building complies with the, uh, height to setback ratio line. And that the proposed dormers which protrude beyond that plane are compliant, uh, with. The, what is permitted by the ordinance two, two-five-five dot two L three. And you can see the garage at the bottom right, uh, the new. Entry at the center here and the, uh, converted portion from, converted garage is now has a. Uh, gable and, uh, dormer and extension from the, the new living space. This is the, uh, side elevation from the northwest. Uh, here you can see the garage doors from the motor court garage, you can see the side of what was previously the garage, which has been cut back. So you have an asymmetrical roof line here, uh, and you can see the addition, the back of the property. Is the rear elevation, and at the left you see the existing great room. And at the right, the kitchen, the one-story kitchen addition, uh, which mimics and mirrors the appearance of, uh, the existing great room. And again, this is the side elevation to the southeast, where you see the, at the left, the garage. And, uh, in the middle you see the two new dormers of the expanded second floor. Uh, just briefly, the proposed building materials, primary building materials will be, uh, horizontal, uh. Fiber cement clambered siding, which would be located on the side and rear facades. Uh, fiber cement board and batten siding, which would be located on the front facade in the garage. And then country ledge stone, uh, which would be located at the ground floor. Uh, the front facade are on the ground floor and the garage, and also as a base material at the side elevations. And I just wanted to show you, this is the view, existing view from the head of the driveway looking towards the front of the building. And this is what the proposed view would look like. And I'd just like to summarize a couple key benefits we feel are, are represented in this approach. Um, to providing this new garage, one is that. The applicant had the opportunity to either maintain the existing property and adapt it to their needs, or to. Demolish the, the structure entirely and build an entire new structure to suit their needs. Uh, I think the, the applicants are proposing an approach where they maintain the existing building. And propose smaller targeted additions which allow for the reuse of much of the existing structure. And this is a very sustainable approach, it's one of the core ten, tenets of sustainable design, is reusing existing construction. Reducing resource use and carbon emissions embodied within resource consumption and transportation. We feel there is also a benefit to the streetscape of removing a forward-facing, non-conforming garage. Um, or, and by not enlarging that non-conformity, by creating a motor car garage which is oriented inward. The surface oriented towards the street is returned to the primary facade and the large expanse of garage doors is now directed inward rather than towards the street. And finally, this allows for a family to join a community and adapt the residents full of their family history to suit their growing family needs. So, uh, that concludes my plan testimony, Anthony.
No, thank you. Any questions from the board, happy for our, our next witness?
Board members, any questions of this, of the architect? Okay, nice.
Yeah, yeah, I have a question, Steve.
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, um, early on you, you pointed out, um, or, or. If you expanded the existing garage and you mentioned it would be coming close to a easement. Do you, do you have a, either a drawing that shows the easement or? Could you at least tell me, tell me how far the easement would be from an expen, uh, expanded garage?
Uh, and it may be better for my, uh, engineer to address this, but there is a twenty-foot sewer easement. That straddles the property line to the northwest property, so ten feet of it is on this property and ten feet of it is on the neighboring property. That all falls within the fifteen-foot side yard setback.
Yeah, I understand it would, uh, violate the setback, but, um. Yeah, how, how far would an expanded garage be from that easement?
Uh, if, to achieve the desired width of the garage, it would be right up against the easement, it would not extend. Into the easement, but it would be right up against the easement.
Okay, thanks, that's.
Great. So with that, I would add, I'm trying to look to see if.
Okay, please continue.
Oh, here we go, uh. Could you just unmute yourself, please?
Yep.
Fantastic, and you can just introduce. Fantastic. And can you just introduce yourself to the board?
My my name is James Kaiser. I received my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Drexel University in two thousand eighteen. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and good standing. And I have six plus years of the of working in New Jersey as a design engineer, preparing site plans, subdivisions, land use, grading, drainage, stormwater management, utilities, and soil version sediment control.
We'll accept you as the next for your field.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And um, did you prepare the plans or did your office prepare the plans and connect you with this application?
Yes.
All right, and you have knowledge of those points, correct?
Yep.
All right, and would you be able to uh first explain the existing conditions of the property?
Yes, and uh, do you want me to share my screen and go into the presentation or do you just want an overview?
That'd be great. So pull back up, exhibit A one. And what sheet is this? Just so we, I believe it's just one of the pages that.
Yeah, this is uh slide thirty-seven or sheet thirty-seven. And the existing conditions on the next sheet will be uh sheet thirty-eight.
Fantastic. You go ahead and and discuss those with the board.
All right. Uh, the subject property is known as Lot Two within block five nine oh two of the tax maps. It is located with the within the R five residential zone. Uh, it has a lot area of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet or zero point six one acres. Uh, the property is a narrow property and long. It has a lot width of a hundred feet and a depth of two hundred fifty-six point zero eight feet. Uh, the property is a single family residential use and is surrounded by other single family residential uses. Uh, the existing site improvements include a two story framed dwelling located centrally on the subject property with an associated slate patio and deck located towards the rear of the existing structure. It also has the existing paved drive and brick paper walk located at the front of the existing structure. Uh, there is a shed located at the rear of the existing property. The lot is located along Riverside Drive and the existing driveway ties into the existing front entry garage. And as I previously stated, the uh paved drive ties into the existing front entry garage. Uh, the property has existing tree cover buffering the front and side yards. And as I also previously stated, the property is narrow and long with a lot width of a hundred. Uh, this is an existing nonconforming condition where the required minimum width is a lot width is a hundred and twenty-five feet.
Uh, that's that's for if there's a motor court, correct?
Uh, let's say it's the zone, the zoning requirement.
Just make sure. Thank you.
Uh, there are also existing nonconforming side yard setbacks in multiple locations of uh the existing structure on both sides. Uh, the worst case is fourteen point six three feet located at the northeast corner of the existing structure. Uh, and fifteen feet is the required minimum side yard setback. Uh, along the northern property line, there is a twenty foot wide sewer easement with ten feet of it extending onto the subject property.
And could you just run your cursor down where the easement is?
Yes.
I just want to help address uh Mr. Floyd's question, just to show him where that easement is.
Yes, it's located right here.
All right, thank you.
And I now will go into the proposed site improvements. So the applicant is proposing a six hundred and twenty-two square foot building addition, seven hundred and seven square foot garage addition and a three hundred and sixty-three square foot deck addition. Due to the lot uh size and shape, the buildable areas for this property are in the front or rear yards. Uh, the building addition and deck addition will be located or are proposed to be located at the rear of the existing structure. And the motor court style garage addition is proposed to be located at the front of the existing structure. The existing driveway is proposed to be expanded to allow for access to the proposed garage and to allow for the adequate maneuverability of vehicles to serve the property and also prevent them from backing onto the public street. The existing garage is proposed to be converted into livable space. As I previously mentioned, the existing garage is proposed to be converted to livable space. Uh, the proposed garage side yard setback is fifteen point eight six feet, where fifteen feet is the required minimum setback, so the proposed garage addition will comply with that. However, the existing house still has the substandard side yard setback of fourteen point six three six three feet uh located at the northeast portion that I previously indicated. Uh, the land, the applicant is working with a landscape architect to provide a landscape design that will provide an appropriate buffer between the proposed garage addition and the neighbor to the south. The nearest corner of the proposed garage is located fifty feet away from the front property line, where fifty-six feet is the required front yard setback. A variance is requested for this encroachment. Uh, the the proposed garage addition also proposes one wall with a length of four point four two feet, where the ordinance requires a wall length to be a minimum of eight feet. This is located in the northeast corner of the proposed garage addition. A variance is requested for this condition as well. If the minimum of eight feet was met, the for the proposed wall, we would be encroaching further into the front yard setback and we would be increasing the impervious coverage of the site. For a motor court garage, uh, there's a requirement for a hundred twenty-five feet for lot width. The existing lot has a lot width of a hundred feet and therefore a variance is requested for this condition as well. Uh, the proposed driveway width is forty-five point one nine feet, where twenty-two feet is the maximum allowed driveway width within the first seventy-five feet of the front yard and therefore variance is requested for this condition. Uh, we determined the driveway width using the municipal ordinances of uh dimension D provided in figure twenty-three on um slide forty-three. And that was forty-five point one nine. Uh, the and to reiterate, the driveway is being designed to allow for adequate maneuverability of the site and to prevent vehicles from backing out onto the public street. As a result.
Can you just clarify there, uh, because it was previously identified in the in the zoning memo that the driveway width was thirty-five feet? But we're looking at it again based off the ordinance, it would be a maximum of forty-five point nineteen feet?
Correct, yes.
All right, so we just out of an abundance of caution and transparency, we just wanted to note that. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
As a result of the improvements, the proposed impervious coverage is twenty-eight point zero seven percent, where twenty-nine percent is the allowable and therefore complies with the ordinance. Uh, the proposed floor area ratio is nineteen point eight percent, where twenty percent is the allowable and therefore complies with the ordinance as well. The proposed change in previous coverage exceeds four hundred square feet and therefore is required to comply with the Princeton municipality's small pro- small project stormwater management ordinance requirement. Uh, the applicant has designated area on the property for the stormwater management and will submit the design and compliance statements to the municipal engineer for the review and approval of the design as a condition of approval, should the board vote to uh approve the variances requested.
Great.
And that will conclude my engineering testimony.
Thank you. Any questions for this witness?
Board members, any questions of the engineer? No, please proceed.
All right. And with that, I would like to introduce our last uh witness for this evening, just making sure I see him. Oh, Mr. Hanson, all right, can you just introduce yourself to the board and make sure that everybody sees you square?
Absolutely. Can you hear me? It's John Hanson, J O H N, H A N S E N. Uh, I can give you a little background of my experience, been in the business for thirty-two years. Uh, graduated from Virginia Tech in nineteen ninety-two, licensed professional engineer and a licensed planner in New Jersey, both in good standing. And tonight I'll be testifying as a professional planner. I've been involved in hundreds of cases and uh actually testified in Princeton, but it's probably been about twenty years since I was here.
We'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I um, Mr. Grace and Mr. Kaiser, I think did an excellent job of laying out, you know, the existing and the proposed conditions. So I think within the lateness of the hour, let me just get down to a couple of slides here and and kind of get down to the the planning testimony.
And you're going to be pulling back up exhibit A one, correct?
Yeah, can you see that?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay. So, you know, this is our planning slides, we're calling them. And what you see in front of you here is um basically the zoning map. It shows the R five T's district and everything around our lot, which is generally the center of this exhibit, is also in uh the same district. So that's the point to show that the neighborhood is um this the zoning around this area is pretty well solidified. Uh, the next exhibit is the tax map. And I'll just zoom in on that a little bit. We're Lot Two, which is right in this area here. And I think the thing to take away from here is just to reiterate from what Mr. Grace and Mr. Kaiser said, you know, it's a long and narrow lot. It's not dissimilar from the other lots in the neighborhood, but it is have does have that unique shape. And it also has that uniqueness where the intersection with the right of way is at an angle. And so that's that's an important part of the testimony. This next exhibit is really meant to show, um, you know, from the overall standpoint in the neighborhood where Mr. Grace had said they had done some uh inspections of the properties around here and what was motor court uh type properties in the area. So the subject property is the one that has the ellipse around it. And then these other ones in red here are motor court type properties. So it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood, it's consistent. And three of these properties, the two on Prospect Avenue and the one on Evergreen Circle, are motor court properties with a hundred foot minimum lot width. So they uh both, they all function, they're consistent with what we're proposing, and you can see they're not out of character. Onto the next slide. So what this is, is a street view driving up Riverside. Uh, the blue ellipse is the subject property, so you'd be looking north at the subject property. And the purpose here is just to show there's existing cypress, white pines of different varying levels to really provide, you know, it's almost a screen and a buffer um from the traveling public. So you don't even see the building in that location. The next one would be traveling the other way down Riverside and to the left and behind the blue lips would be the property as well. And so you're really, from a screening standpoint, um, you don't really see the property, um, the home until you really get right to the the narrow um driveway where you're where you're facing and looking right at the house. And that's what this shows. So this is a snapshot, you're standing right in front, looking right at it. And I think the thing to take away here is what Mr. Grace said. You know, the real prominent piece of this is the two car garage. And in general, um, you know, in my experience, that's not the most desirable look. Uh, you know, certainly functional, but um a more desirable look would be something that incorporates um, less than the garage doors from the from the public view. So um, we said that the lot is unique in shape. Um, we also talked about the existing uh side yard setbacks that they're less than the fifteen feet that's required. We looked at the existing trees and the shrubs, and obviously this is um is buffered nicely. So I don't need to talk really more about the the building and and the layout of the property. I think Mr. Grace and Mr. Kaiser did that very well. The four variances again are um the minimum lot width. So this is a hundred feet, um, and it's compliant with the bulk standard of the ordinance. But when you actually go to use it as a motor court, that's when the hundred twenty-five feet kicks in. So we do request relief from that because we are going to that motor court condition. Uh, the prevailing front yard setback, which is calculated by the municipal engineer, has been confirmed in this case is fifty-six feet. We're proposing a front yard setback of fifty feet, so we're six feet exceeding in that situation. The minimum length of the side facing wall, and that's on the south side of the wall, I'm sorry, south side of the property, that's eight feet and we're proposing four point four two feet. And then again, the driveway, which Mr. Kaiser just spoke of, the maximum driveway width is twenty-two feet. And we're proposing forty-five point one nine. And that's measured if you're looking at the home, so the distance would be parallel to the home and consistent with the profile of the driveway going into the garages. So I think there's elements of a C one and a C two case here. And I'll just refresh the board, uh, you know, the C one is considered the hardship case. And the hardship, it runs with the property and um the positive has a positive and a negative criteria that we must show and the board must find in order to grant that variance. The positive criteria in the hardship case is that if it's due to the unique shape uh of the lot or the lawfully existing structures thereon, and whether that creates a practical difficulty in compliance with uh your project. And the negative criteria is that we must show and the board must find that there's no substantial detriment to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance or the public good. And really, the key uh word there is substantial. You know, every variance request has some impairment, but whether or not it rises to the level of substantial is really what the board should find. The C two criteria, we call the flexible C or the benefits versus the detriment, the detriments type variance. The positive criteria in that case is that we show that at least one purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced if uh the board granted relief for this project. The negative criteria in the C two case is the same three prongs that I just mentioned. So with here, with this case, when I look at the um the lot width variance, you know, I really think that's a C one type case, and that's really due to the shape and the narrowness of the lot. You know, we're not able to expand it on either of the sides. It's already slightly nonconforming, so any expansion on that would increase the nonconformity. Um, so um, we can't purchase any property from either of the lots on the sides because they're also would render them nonconforming. So it's a it's a hardship type case. The driveway width and the wall length and the front yard deviation, I believe those would fit into a C two type criteria. And in this case, you know, there's there's two criteria that I think um special reasons that would be advanced, Purpose A and Purpose I. And so Purpose A, which is really established by the courts, is is really the uh a very important purpose. And that's to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And I think here what the focus is, is that the the configuration of the proposed driveway and the combination really provide a circulation that allows vehicles to more easily maneuver on the site, pull out headfirst onto the public road instead of backing out onto the public road. And that's a clear safety uh concern. So that's advanced. And I think the with respect to the front yard deviation, in general, when you are eliminating the garage doors, in my opinion, that face the the public view and creating a really aesthetic architectural element in the front without the garage doors facing the street, I think that creates a uh creative uh desirable individual environment, and that's Purpose I. And again, with the discussion of the wall and and the length of wall, I think that, you know, in order to create this design and make it functional, the architect was faced with either extending the wall on the south side of the building and making it a more mass, continuous mass. I think he took the right approach by creating that four point two articulation, four point two foot articulation in there. I think that's a better solution. I think it's a uh a more creative solution and gives a little bit better aesthetic look if you're looking at the property from the uh from the sub. And I still, you know, and it still works, it promotes a functional garage for the applicant. So I think in, you know, in summary, I believe that this, these variances are really minimal in nature. I think the architect's done an excellent job at accommodating the applicant and doing so in a way that uh doesn't provide any uh impacts to the neighbors. I think there's no substantial detriment uh to the to the zone plan, the zoning ordinance, or the public good in this case. And I think there's actually some enhancements. And, you know, one of the enhancements, I think, is safety, but also with headlights. I think in this case, um, especially to the property to the south, I think that side entry motor court type garage really uh limits the impact. I think that side entry motor court type garage really uh limits the impact to that neighbor. So uh I think, you know, in in summary, I think it's been designed to be sensitive to the neighbors. I think it's con- consistent with the development throughout the community. Um, and I think it meets the positive and the negative cri- criteria, and uh I hope the board grants the relief. I think it's warranted and at that, I'll leave it open to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, any questions?
Board members, any questions of the planner?
Is there a slide that shows the new proposed driveway? Because it it seems awfully large and it occupies an awful large portion of the front setback of the property.
Yeah, I can uh give me one second and I'll share that. Can you see that?
Yeah.
So the so the the forty-five feet that we took, you can follow my cursor
Mm-hmm.
is all the way across the front here. So the actual driveway that as it enters the doors of the garage is consistent with a normal type driveway that you would see, which is twenty-one point two five. But because it's a motor court, um and because it's facing the way that it's facing, you actually conservatively, you would calculate this as forty-five feet. But it's not dissimilar to any of the other motor courts. So when you back up here, the forty-five feet just allows you to be able to maneuver in this area, back up, and then drive head on out into the road.
And Mr. Hanson, if you could just scroll up a few more pages, I just wanted keep going. Stop there, I note that the existing pavement, it's uh consistent in terms of width, right? We would just be paving the entire.
Yeah, that's correct, and it's a great point. We're not changing the width of the access drive coming in. So that's all staying the same. It's really, you can follow my cursor, it's moving in a southerly direction. So it's pavers now, would still be a hard surface, it would be the asphalt pavement. Uh, but it's consistent with, you know, really the length of the impervious surface that you see now in front of them.
So you don't think any of that can be removed, even that that part that's kind of jets out to the left? That's where your where your cursor is?
Well, it, could it be removed? Yes, um, I don't know that it's warranted. I think that, you know, it does provide another little back out area and another uh, you know, piece of impervious for the for the client, um, but if the
And we could also ask our engineer to provide some ammonia in on that, but it really for safety, so that way they could pull onto Riverside uh commerce rather than backing in. Better ingress and egress as well circulation.
Yeah, I would say it provides more uh or allows for additional maneuverability of the paved drive. And it's still underneath the impervious coverage limit.
They don't have adequate space to pull in and out so that they can do head on into Riverside by just going, you know, just kind of straight parallel back?
They do, I mean, you know, this this here would be enough room. This adds just an extra level of of maneuverability.
Okay, that's that's my question.
But is it necessary? Seems like might be excessive, you know?
I if 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 the board has concerns about it, maybe we take a uh of the the quick recess and ask the client um what they feel about that. But, you know, the only other thing I would offer is that um, you know, you do have a substantial amount of evergreen trees here. So uh, that's what you're gonna see when you look at Riverside from Riverside. And I think, given that, I think um, you know, the the potential uh and your concern for too much impervious coverage is really mitigated.
Well, and if I'm just so that I'm clear, that cutout that we're talking about now, that's exa- that's an existing condition, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, all right. And and through the other testimony was proffered that what we're trying to do is limit the amount of disturbance here. It's
We're trying to limit the amount of disturbance, and I think it's important to know that this has been designed sensitive to the impervious coverage. We're still under the maximum, so we comply.
All right.
Well, the only thing is that um that little turnaround when the driveway in in effect came straight out gave you the ability to turn around or at least a little more maneuvering space. Now it's really offset from the motor court, the, you know, with the twenty-one foot in front of the garage and the twenty-four foot behind it. So it really, to even get into it, if you back out of the garage, you've really got a lot of go through a lot of contortions to get in there. So it doesn't really serve a purpose anymore.
I agree, I see the same thing. You you'd be you'd be backing out halfway down the driveway before you can turn around if you're using that little tail.
Yeah.
It's a minor item, but you know, it's it appears to go to the property line. It gives you a little more space to create a buffer in there between you and the neighboring property, you know, on the pavement. Sure call.
I I agree too. I I was gonna ask about that existing bump out, whether it was necessary. And also, when the planner goes through, um, I'm not debating it, but you know, the purpose uh being met is is safety on the width um of of the the asphalt serving the motor court. I mean, you know, I'll make up a number, fifty percent of the driveways in Princeton, that means someone can argue that they should be allowed to go head headlights first out of their driveway and expand their areas, you know, um. Backing out of the driveway is safe enough, um, I would say. And um, so I didn't really accept that purpose being met of safety.
I agree, Michael.
And I'm not looking for a response, I'm just putting that
Any other questions?
Okay, um, if none of the board members have any other questions of the applicant or the applicant's witnesses or the attorney, we can uh, Mr. Tadaro, you can sum up and we'll go in, we'll go open this up to the public?
Yeah, so thank you. So that concludes our initial proffer. Uh, we've identified the four variants that we need. It's uh what we believe to be a a worthwhile opportunity to bring a new young family into the community. Uh, we we've satisfied both the positive and the negative criteria for granting the assault variance relief. Well, we're we're not going anywhere, we're here for any questions uh or any potential comments that might come up during public comment session. With that, just thank the board for its time.
Okay, I think one, we'll open it to the public in a second, but if you want to talk with your client about the possibility of eliminating that small piece of driveway, uh, just think about that right now.
We could certainly raise that with them, um. Yeah, we will.
Okay, all right, um, we'll go into, we'll open this up to the public. Claudia, has anyone indicated they'd like to speak? I think I see a name I don't recognize.
Yes, there you go.
Okay. Please identify yourself.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I I apologize, it's ten thirty, I know you're all exhausted as I am, been anxiously waiting for this. My name is Silvana Nazaro Clark. I um was born and raised in the house next door, five, six, two Prospect Avenue. And Melissa, I've never officially met you. I remember your parents, and I remember the horrible time when your grandmother passed. My father called me. My father is now a hundred and one. He's been living, um, we had have had the home for over sixty years. And I want to congratulate you um and your family for this exciting new step that you're taking. And I really, I come first um to definitely represent the Nazaro family um for good wishes, but also and definitely support for what you're doing. By the way, how much time do I have?
Ms. Clark, actually, I wasn't sure.
I don't want to limit it, but let's keep it to a minimum.
Okay, I'm trying, I, yes.
Yeah, Ms. Clark, uh, I'm not sure that you're gonna be offering any testimony. It sounds more like your your thoughts at this point, but we'll just swear you in in case you do.
That's fine.
So you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you would focus on on your
Yes, I will, I've been moved on, I wanted to, I wanted to start with that because it's very important. This is an emotional thing because it's a family concern. My father could not be here tonight. He's he's excited about this opportunity, but he's also very upset in terms of what it poses to his property. Um, so I consulted today, and by the way, I did not, I was not aware of this. We'd never received notice, unfortunately. I don't know what happened, um, but um, I do, we do, I do, we do want to work with the family and make it work for them, but also in consideration of the neighbors. And I think, and and um, and speaking to um, I was frantically trying to sort out what what exactly this is about and for and what it what it would do for our family and our property and the neighborhood. And so I spoke to um, a friend, Chris Tar, many of you might know him, he's a a local lawyer. And um, while he couldn't be with us tonight, he did bring up this point of a neighborhood character ordinance, and I thought, I thought about it, and you know, these points that are given tonight, and I listened to this whole piece about the car, um, the motor court and the config and and how many homes in the area have it. The concern I have is the configuration of it. And I think, by the way, there's a whole team of people here, they've done a ton of homework, and I'm coming with a very um, you know, brief but um, to the point testimonial that the problem with the motor court is, in addition to the narrowness of the property, um, is is the configuration of it, where it is located in front of the home and what it does um to my my father's, uh, our our family's home. Um, the the concern is, and I I'd like to just um, like, I apologize, I know there's a time limitation here, but and everyone's tired, but when we go back to exhibit one, um, one A, A one, excuse me, I'm tired. Um, and I scroll down, um, and I look at page um, six, seven, and eight. Um, what's not shown here is the view from my, from our home on the right side. And um, the 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 far, the bottom left corner of page six, um, that would extend out and down to the left of there is my father's patio. And so the the worry that I that we have is um, and also you can see straight ahead in that same photo of that uh that beautiful maple, red maple tree. So I appreciate Melissa, the 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 intention to um create some more landscaping. Um, but I, we do have a concern about um the shadow that that addition creates on my father's his garden and his his patio that he loves to go to every day, the shadow um, and also obscuring the property views and um property itself. Um, in addition, um, it's it's a very, very long, narrow property, and we ask that the the that you consider the design, um, you know, I wondered about the point that was given about from nineteen foot wide to twenty-four feet wide, that's that's five feet. And I know I I if I heard correctly, it hits the eastment, it doesn't cross the eastment. Whereas um in the other direction, the uh, the motor um court, to me, poses a whole different configuration that does um, you know, it does have a negative impact on on our our existing property. And again, I just want to go back to the point of this comes from a spirit of truly support, but I really um with these incredibly talented people, is there any other configuration that you can come up with? So I think this one is i- i- it does have negatives um and as it relates to, again, as I go back to that point of um, the uh, the character, um, the ordinance that I, the neighborhood ordinance, character ordinance. I'm tired, excuse me.
Well, is that the, is that it? Is that your question, you're done?
Um, I I'm probably not done, but I think you guys would want me
No, 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 I want you to make sure you you spoke.
Yeah, I think that's the the key thing, and and I and I will say um that we haven't had a whole lot of time to process this. You know, we received a letter from Melissa and last week, and I just literally looked at the plans today, because I didn't even know when this meeting was happening. And so I just would love for a chance to engage with some more, some other possibilities, okay? Um, because I don't know that um, this is the best configuration. And if we just look, scroll down on that exhibit, just to for that point, um, which I heard Mr., I believe Hanson was talking about the car motor court next door on the other side. It's it's literally, if you look at it as a puzzle piece on page seven, the way that the homes are configured, the motor court literally would be directly in front of um, our, my father's um sight line to the road as well as creating a shadow onto his his uh, his porch and his his uh, his garden that he loves to keep.
Okay, could you bring up um to the applicant, can you bring up the proposed site plan that uh shows the new garage, also shows, I guess, the landscaping that currently exists there?
Sure, we can have our our professional, and while one of our professionals is pulling that up, I apologize if I missed it. Uh, Ms. Clark, did you stay, do you, I I don't need your address specifically, do you live at the property?
Um, I live at on Lawrenceville Road. I have a home on uh in uh in Princeton, and I currently am living on 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 um on a Lawrenceville Road in Princeton.
Ms. Clark, you're appearing tonight on behalf of your father, is that what you said?
He's sleeping right now, he's, there's no thing that he can, and he's, but he's maybe not sleeping, but he couldn't represent himself. So I'm a trustee of his estate, and I'm speaking on his behalf.
And I just, as a point of order, uh, Ms. Casey, I I know we don't strictly apply the rules of evidence and land use for hearings. But I just want to just know, I'm concerned about um somebody speaking on behalf of of a neighbor. I know it's his daughter, but um, I just want that to weigh into any
A trustee of his estate, so I
I I know, but as the trustee of the estate, it doesn't necessarily mean that you have
Okay, well, my father's a hundred and one, so I could, I wish for people to understand that he couldn't be here at ten thirty at night. And he couldn't articulate his, it would be a very different conversation if he was trying to articulate his concerns.
Well, Mr. Mr. Tadaro, so your concern is what, that Ms. Clark isn't authorized to make these statements tonight on behalf of her father?
I'm not sure, no, that if she can. I I mean, and I'm, and I just want that to weigh into the board's consideration process, that's all. And I wanted to just note for the record, we didn't want to interrupt Ms. Clark in the middle of uh uh her time, and and we're happy that she's participating tonight, but I just wanted to note that for the record.
Yeah, I I do think that I I I would love to know um how the the committee would feel about the neighborhood. I I want to know more about this neighborhood of character ordinance and how this applies.
Eric, would you like to comment on that, please?
Sure. Um, in two thousand eighteen, the town enacted uh a series of ordinances to address the design of single-family homes and the largely, you know, about the placement of garages. Um, so as you heard earlier, the front-facing garage that exists there now uh is non-complying, if it was built today, it would have to be setback sixteen feet from the front facade. Um, a side entry garage would need to be eight feet back from the nearest front facade or the nearest facade. And uh, this proposed garage addition um, needs a variance. It requires a hundred and twenty-five foot lot width and the width is only one hundred feet and it, it needs to meet the front yard setback, which in this case is prevailing setback, which is the average properties within five hundred feet, um, in either direction of the property. And um, it requires a variance. You can see it seems to meet at the end closest to your property, but the diagonal uh, orientation of the, the road with the lots, uh, it doesn't meet the uh, as it diagonally slices through the garage. They also instituted at the same time, the twenty-two foot garage uh, driveway width, excuse me. So um, it was designed uh, in response to teardowns and garage-centric designs.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. What I'm trying to, I'm trying to open my drawings here. What I'm trying to figure out is, I'm looking at an aerial photograph. I have uh, Google Earth up on my, on the screen.
Thank you.
And I see a very large stand of trees in front of the, as you face the, the proposed house from the street at the right-hand corner of it. And I'm wondering, it appears that that's all on your property, I mean, you, the applicant's property. And I'm trying to see, uh, I think I made it. So how much of that is going to stay and how much do that, that buffer looks like it's, how much of that is going to stay and how much of it is going to come out?
Uh, only two trees or two trees on the south property line side are proposed to be removed. The majority of the landscaping or existing tree cover is proposed to remain.
Okay, because it's not. Well, let's see, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at sheet three of six. And I see the, the tree at the corner, the right-hand corner of the house in the front coming out and then one a little further forward. I see the cluster of hedges that are on the adjacent property uh, that are closer to the street. And then I don't see anything that's of that stand of trees or that, that those, that growth, let's say, which is going to remain. And that appears to be directly opposite of the patio area, I believe that uh, Ms., I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Uh, Ms. Clark, Silvana Clark.
Clark is talking about, I guess, I guess that might be it.
And the red maple tree, is that going to be removed as well?
It's, yes, that is proposed to be removed.
Okay, so that's the concern is that, is the, the question of the configuration of this expansion and how it impacts the, my, our property? So, so that, that's the concern. Um, I, I just, I, it, it ju, and I wonder, we talked about, and I, in the presentation, I heard that there was a five-foot because I, I can appreciate what Melissa was saying, that the garage was too narrow. So an expansion of five feet, um, does that cross the easement? It's up to the easement, correct?
Well, it is, but apart from the easement, it also, I'm just summarizing the testimony. It, it also.
Would you, Anthony, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, expanding in that direction has, has multiple, raises multiple concerns. One is that it would extend into the side yard setback on that side, so it would be imposing itself into the side back, uh, the setback of the opposite neighbors, against the opposite neighbor's property. It would also cause that extension to increase an existing non-conformity, which is counter to those neighborhood residential zoning standards that uh, Mr. Bridger just described. It probably would also produce a, a, a variance against the height to setback ratio from the lot line on the left side of the lot.
Okay.
And it would put the, it would put the addition up against that uh, easement, which is something you'd like to avoid.
Right, okay.
And, and Ben, would, can you just clarify as well that this proposed garage addition is set back fifteen feet from lot one, from the setback along this uh, uh, lot one property boundary?
Yeah, so the, the, although there is an existing non-conformity and that non-conformity is three to four inches, depending where on the facade you are. Uh, despite there's an existing non-conformity on that side into the setback, all the proposed, of the proposed addition volume is in uh, is within, conforms to the fifteen-foot setback, I'll say. It is stepped back so that it doesn't, it doesn't align with the existing non-conforming wall line.
So, so the, the non-conformity is for the existing residents in the rear of the existing structure, is that correct?
The existing, yeah, the existing side wa, uh, side walls that you see there are vary between two to four inches over the, over the fifteen-foot.
Okay, so the, so, so this proposed garage in terms of, of, of the side yard setback, that could be built without any variances. We, we, correct?
Uh, without the side, that's right. The only, the only, it's just the front, mean prevailing front yard setback that is the variance request for the garage. And I would like to address that, actually.
Right.
Mr. Bridger described how, how that is calculated. It is uh, structures within five hundred feet of the lot, both directions, on the same side of the street, in the same zoning district. Uh, and so in this circumstance, it only applies, that calculation will only apply to all the structures on this block, which there are five of them. Now, this, the, Ms. Clark's uh, property where she grew up actually addresses Prospect Avenue as the front yard. So that does not contribute to the mean prevailing front setback. On top of that, you're supposed to knock out the high and low so that you get the mean. That leaves only two structures on this road, which are used in calculating the mean prevailing front setback, if I'm, if I'm interpreting that correctly. And uh, Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman would have to attest to that, but um, that our mean prevailing front setback is based on two properties. And also there are two structures that don't directly, perpendicularly address the street. You're measuring to the closest point to the street. So I think, I under, certainly understand why the significance of the mean prevailing front setback as a um, as a, a bulk uh, regulation. But here, I think, you know, we have to understand it's only two properties that are really contributing to that. It's not like we have a, um, a line of, you know, fifteen, sixteen houses that are all setback aligning with one another directly addressing the street. So I think that has to carry some significance in the requests for the uh, variance with respect to that setback. I did also just want to respond uh, to the comment about shading. Uh, this property is actually north of, north, northwest of the, the property. There's not going to be any additional shading caused by the addition, uh, nor, nor should it be robbing you of any shade provided from the maple tree because it, you, the solar exposure is coming from a different direction. And the, and the, and the third comment I just wanted to make is that uh, even in seeking solutions for the garage to be located elsewhere on the property, the applicant is still looking to expand the livable area up there of, of the structure. And where the garage not to be located where we have proposed it, it's very likely we would be looking to expand the footprint of the structure in that location. Uh, and that would be as of right. It wouldn't be uh, with a variance. So I just wanted to identify that.
Hey, I just, again, thank you for your responses and I appreciate this time. I just think overall, this word of intensity came up earlier tonight. I do think it's beautiful, but there is definitely a a stronger intensity that it poses to the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, the Littmans and us, um, the Nazaros. So I want, just thank you for your time and I do wish your family the best and um, I, I would love for a, a mutually kind of uh, you know, happy decision on both sides. But it's, right now, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's, the, the proposal is very intense from a neighbor's perspective.
I have a question. How tall is the chain link fence between the two properties?
Are you asking me that?
No, I'm asking anybody. I mean, I, I see there is a chain link fence. How tall is it? Is it four feet or six feet?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm not sure if we have a number on that that I could speak.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter. There is a chain link fence, though. That's part of the view from.
Yeah, it's about five feet, right. But what happens is, what's, what it's going to be obstructing is the um, from the, from my, my father's porch, when he, we look out, he looks out, he can see the road and you can see the green area of the street. That's going to be, that's going to be obstructed by the garage. That'll be just a white, a long white wall coming straight on and it's right, you know, close to the property. So it's. Yeah.
But what if the existing, what if the proposed garage? And I can, I can understand what the applicant is saying about the location of the garage and, and the overall function of the house. But what if the, and the garage, again, uh, as the architect said, uh, or someone said, is not going to cause any shadows on your father's property? What if there was just some planting behind the proposed garage? Planting that your father would look at when he's out on his patio that would, so he wouldn't be looking directly at the wall. There'd be some planting there to sort of break it up and then some green.
You know what? I think that's really, you know, what I, here's the problem. It's ten thirty at night and I, what I'm saying is, is that we would really love a chance to um, to respond to this more thoughtfully and give some ideas and, you know, I'm, you know, happy to explore looking at some experts, but I'm not an expert and I'm just, and I, and there's a team of really talented experts here tonight. And I know that they've looked at different things and I appreciate the, the thought around greenery, but my dad's not here. To um, Mr. Tadaro's point, right? I am part owner of the house and then I am a trustee of his estate. And however, with that said, he is extremely upset about this. And so I, I don't, I don't know what, what, would work for him and what, but I would, really would love for this to be postponed so we can have some time to talk to Melissa and hear these ideas and, and find, maybe come up with something that's, maybe the truth would be great. A great solution, Mr. Cone. But I, I think it's late and I would love a chance to, to let this percolate. Um, and let my dad, dad's voice be heard through this in a more um, reasonable time.
Okay, I can, let me make a comment and then I'll ask the other board members if they'd like to. I, obviously, the applicant noticed the neighbors and your, you know, your father may have gotten, he should have gotten a notice. And I recognize that his age and everything else and I respect that. But the notice was sent, what, ten days ago, something like that. Um, I think, I think it's really, in my opinion, it would be up to the applicant to decide what they would like to do at this point, if they'd like to engage with you to talk about alternatives or they'd like to basically move forward with the proposal that they have. I think that's their decision, so. That's my opinion. Uh, board members, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think you're right.
And, and so if I'm, I mean, we already presented, we're, we're here and, and um, applicants still want to proceed.
I, I have, I have a question.
Please, Michael.
And it, it's, it's related to that. You know, early in the presentation, the applicant said they, they met with many neighbors or met with neighbors. How many neighbors did you meet with?
Sure, if I may. On um, October thirty-first, we went and knocked on the doors of five neighbors. Uh, Mr. Nazaro's house, the Littmans on the other side, the neighbors, the Happers beyond the Littmans, as well as the two across the street neighbors. That day, we were able to speak face to face to the across the street diagonal neighbors who were supportive of our plan, though they weren't able to attend tonight. Um, I spoke on the phone with um, Sandra, one of Mr. Nazaro's other daughters on, um, I believe it was the first of November because um, the letter that, when we knocked on the doors, if folks weren't home, then we left a letter um, in the mailbox. So um, Mr. Nazaro let his uh, family know about our letter and Sandra, one of his other daughters, gave me a call. We had a chat um, either on the thirty, same night, the thirty-first or the first, I can't remember. Um, but I could check my phone records to tell you, it was for sure one of those two days. We did mention that there was this meeting on this date and that they would, everyone would receive official notice, but we wanted for them to hear from us first. We've since had also a phone conversation with the Littmans, the neighbors um, on the other side of the property who are also supportive of our plan. Um, and, you know.
If, if I, if I could, this.
Sure, sorry.
What I think I'm hearing you say is you actually spoke to two different neighbors?
Uh, two additional neighbors in addition to the Nazaros.
Okay, three. Okay, thank you. That was simply my question.
Okay.
And that was just above and beyond what we needed to do because, like I said, we noticed for this application.
Oh, I understand that, but you, she, she put on the record in the beginning that he spoke to neighbors. I just wanted to understand how many.
Understood.
I'm, I'm glad you went above and beyond, but that, that was not the basis of my question. It was based on testimony already given.
And just, Ms. Clark, the, um, the applicant said she spoke to, um, would it be your sister?
Yes, and she's also a co-trustee and Sandra expressed a concern about this and if it could be postponed. And, and, and apparent, and my other sister Lily spoke to Mr. Tadaro and, and also asked if it could be postponed. And apparently it could not be. So that's why I'm coming tonight. Again, I'm not trying to be difficult, Melissa, please know that. I just want you to know that my dad's extremely upset and, and, and for good reason. You know, this whole question of neighborhood character ordinance, while it's a lovely design, it does impact the view from the spot from our home. If it happened on the Littman side, I'm sure Michael would be here tonight. You know what I mean? It's like the, the exact location of where my dad sits every day is right where that wall is. And it's, it, it totally changes things. So, you know, I think this question of the this, what Chris Tar had told me about this neighborhood character ordinance is a question that I would like to have the board discuss and, because it's the configuration. It's not just the existence of the motor court. It's the configuration of it. And that's, that's what I.
Can I, I just interject here. As I, I think we, we note the concern. I'm not sure if there's anyone else in the public who wants to speak on this, but we're talking about a concerns of a, of a neighbor who's not here. Now we're talking about advice from council who's not here. I, I think the, the, the point is taken.
That's not very nice.
And, no.
Mr. Tadaro, just, just so that I can understand, Ms. Clark's indicated she's also part owner of the home. Is it your position that that doesn't give her status either to come here tonight and, and provide comments?
I didn't know in, until she was, until just now. And like I said, I mean, we, we've been fine with the comments. Um, I just think it needs to be taken in, in totality.
My credibility, in other words. Like it's just, of just my perspective, my points. I mean, I'm just trying to state a concern that's, I, I think it's fairly valid concern. If any, but any one of you were living next door, you'd probably be concerned too. And, and there's just been a, a short window to, to hash it out.
May, may I speak at some point?
Well, let, let's Ms. Clark finish and then you can speak.
Okay, well, well, we'll wait uh, Ms. Clark to finish and then we'll address that. I mean.
Michael.
There. I mean, I was going to, I thought she was finished. We're.
Okay, then, then we're fine, okay.
We're kind of repeating the same things.
Okay, Mr. Tadaro, do you want to speak and then I'll speak?
Yeah, no, that's, we were just going to wait and see if there's any. Yeah, no, that's, we were just gonna wait and see if there's anything else. So, please, please, Mr. Che.
Okay, my, my feeling is, as I said before, yeah, again, to be fair to the applicant, noticed they properly noticed. And obviously now we know that they reached out to various neighbors, including Ms. Navarro, not, not Ms. Clark, but, and so I think they had, the neighbors had adequate time to prepare for this meeting and to be fair to the applicant and the applicant's team, which is not inexpensive at this point. I think it's up to them to decide if they would like to continue the hearing. And then unless the board has concern and would ask that it be continued, I think it would be up to the applicant. So. Anybody on the board like to add to that?
Yes.
I, it's up to the applicant. You're right.
We've heard the concerns. Let's move on and we'll talk about.
What, Steve, finish that?
I said, well, we, we've heard the concerns, but let's, let's move on and get into.
All right, so you don't, you, you, you're, you're concurring with what I said.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, and I, you know, adequate notice in those given and, you know.
Okay, we're already over the eleven o'clock time limit. It's now eleven oh two. So, board, can we continue this? Can we try to get through this tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
If that's okay with everybody. All right. So, Ms. Clark, are you, you're done with your comments?
Just that, would you like to see a photo of the view from my dad's property? I don't think anyone will see it, but I can show it to you or my sister can.
Just, just, just make it quick, please.
Okay.
She, the board will, obviously, it's the board's prerogative. I'm just going to object just for.
What basis, Mr. D'Addaro, what basis are you objecting?
Well, they're going to be submitting things, they're supposed to be submitted two days in advance.
Wow, that's, that's.
Oh, okay.
Did you take this photo, Ms. Clark?
My sister took it. This is from our property. This, this is from the patio of my dad's property. Looking over, over to that side. So the tree would come down, that red, the, the red maple tree. And it would be, you know, from what the description is, it'd come out further. And so that is quite a change.
And that fence is your fence?
Yes, the, years ago, the, the existing fence basically fell down, so we replaced it.
Okay.
Was falling apart.
Okay, thank you. So, maybe we can take that down.
Yeah, I just, Ms. Casey, is there an exhibit that we want to mark that as or how do we want to?
Ms. Clark, you just testified your sister. Is that a current photo?
Yes.
And would you like that to be an exhibit then for the board tonight? What that means is that it's, it's put into the record of this hearing.
If it's helpful, absolutely. Let me just, how do I, do I just share it again?
Ah, no, would you?
Want to take a picture of it or anything? Do you want it for your, I didn't, I just shared my screen.
It's getting recorded now, but we've got it.
Okay, fine. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so we will make that an object or exhibit. Okay.
Okay, so, so we've heard your testimony. So I'll ask Claudia. Claudia, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on behalf of this?
There are no more hands.
Okay, so hearing done, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Tadaro, you can sum up. First of all, do you or your, and your client wish to continue?
Yes, we've already completed our initial presentation. We've heard from the public, opened and closed. And, and so, yes, we'd like to continue.
Okay. All right. So would you like to sum up before we go into executive session?
Yes, but I'll tell you what, just briefly, like, I believe Ms. Freeman still has her hand up. She's been waiting.
Who, who does? Oh, Ms. Freeman.
Yes, yeah. So I just, I, I saw the hand there.
Oh, the applicant, right. Okay, please, finish up, please.
Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to address Silvana and the family's concerns. We definitely want to be neighborly. We'd love to be a part of the, the community. We don't want to start on a bad foot. So I, I want to just acknowledge, you know, having an elderly relative, my grandmother's lived till ninety-two and ninety-seven. I, you know, I understand what, what it's like to have cherished members of your family as they age and wanting to keep them happy and comfortable. So our intention is, of course, not to upset your father. We would be happy to put plantings in that area that he could look at and have a nice view of. In addition to, in the picture that you just showed, the plantings that you guys have on your property. So we're certainly not trying to upset anybody. We've been working with Ben and Jay-Z A and D for over two years now on coming up with a plan that will work, given the dimensions of the property, given our needs as a family. So we've really tried to look at every possible option. We did, as I mentioned, reach out initially on October thirty first. It wasn't until yesterday that your two sisters shared the concerns that you have with, with us. So I just wanted to mention that we've just heard this, you know, and, and only had twenty-four hours or so to process the concerns as well. So we definitely want to be accommodating, but we also want to move forward with the plans that we've been working on for the last two years. So I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Tadaro, are you finished?
Yes. So again, that concludes our presentation. We have the four variances, none of which were triggered by the actual garage addition. That's not encroaching into setback. The existing setback is on the, a, a separate side of the property for the existing home. We believe that it, the entire project as a whole satisfies the positive and negative criteria, warning the grain of the, the salt variance relief. We thank the board for its, its time and consideration this evening. And we're, we're looking very forward to proceeding with actual construction.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, board members, we are going into executive session. Let's discuss this. Any concerns? We'll start from there. George?
My question, I guess my thoughts on it is we seem to be balancing the needs of one family versus another. I believe the, you know, the concept of plantings to restore or maybe even enhance the view from the neighboring patio is a solution. And, and it's hard for me to try to understand why one family would have more sway than another. And I don't know that that's really part of the zoning function on our part, you know, it really, it's like neighbors might be able to work it out, you know?
No, I, I agree with you. I understand what you're saying.
So in effect, I'm saying I support this, this, this application.
Okay, thank you.
But I would, I maybe like to add a condition that the applicants have agreed to, which is that they, I'm not sure exactly how to put it in a way that's an acceptable legal form, but that they do engage in plantings to restore, you know, the greenery view from the neighboring porch.
Okay, all right, we'll, we'll discuss that with the Freedmans in a minute. Okay, any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I would support this as well. And when I look at the part of the garage addition that is poking into the front yard prevailing setback, it's actually the part that's along the Nazaro's property is coming right up to the setback. It's the other corner that you wouldn't be able to see from that patio portion that is projecting beyond it. And then, so I, I, I don't have that same concern about the garage addition. And I would suggest that they look at, I know that they're not exceeding the impervious coverage, but getting rid of that, actually, it's a lot of, of, of driveway that you're looking at, get, getting rid of that little turnaround that seems to serve no purpose with the new layout.
Okay.
And I support the planting recommendation as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I agree with Bernice, who agrees with George.
I agree with Bernice.
Okay.
My, my thoughts are the motor court is a permitted use in this zone. But it was written that you have to have a hundred and twenty-five width. But, you know, even if this lot had a hundred and twenty-five width, you know, the, and it, it was placed, it, it would still impact the neighbor based on the testimony. But the big thing would be the, the front, front yard setback, you know? So I would not eliminate them wanting a motor court design just because of that. So I guess I'm leaning towards, part of me is leaning towards not voting one way or the other on this. But it, it is a permitted use, even though it's not a wide lot. So I can support it.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I, I would, um, look, it's never an enjoyable thing watching neighbors having conflict. And ideally, I, I would have been nice in retrospect to have, there have been better communication with a timely manner to have addressed this. Unfortunately, that's not the facts that we're presented with. Had there not been this conflict, it would have been a no-brainer for me, you know, and, and it's probably the way that I'm leaning, the way that everybody else is. It would just be nice if there's a way to kind of just, I don't know, do what's possible to accommodate Ms. Clark and, and their concerns. But otherwise, I think that everything else in the application is fine. So I, I'm kind of in agreement with, I think, everybody else on this one.
Okay, I would like to add that I, I support this application. I think eliminating that turnaround, that little back end area would be, I'd like to see that come out. That's up to the applicant. And I think the, I think the idea of considering some sort of landscaping behind the garage to, to at least try to mitigate some of the concerns of the neighbor would be, I would suggest that you consider that. I want to know what you think about that, Mr. and Mrs. Friedman.
May I speak now?
Yes, you can.
Okay, yes. As I, as I thought I mentioned, we are happy to do plantings in that area to try to beautify it, make the view as nice as possible for the Nazaros.
Okay, thank you. All right, so does someone like to make a motion at this point, unless there are any, if there are any other comments from the board or would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I would like to move approval with the condition that, as you mentioned, that landscaping be installed to mitigate the, the visual impact of the new construction. And I just question, Ms. Casey, is that in proper legal form?
Well, I mean. The wording is fine. I guess the question is between neighbors, who decides what's the adequate buffering or what kind of plantings or how tall they are. So.
We, can we leave that up, Karen? Can we leave that up to, I hate to say, Derek and our engineering department to review that? I don't want to put any more burden on them. They're already overworked. But is that something, Derek, that you think you could moderate?
Yeah, I'm sure with, between the arborist and Dan Weissman, we can look at a plan. I don't know. I'm not sure exactly what is going to shield it or buffer it, but we're happy to look at whatever the applicant wants.
Plantings grow.
Yes, they do. That is true.
And also, also, I mean, one thing that, that we haven't, nobody's talked about, but the, there's a very large tree that's going to be lost there. So to have that be seriously considered in terms of planting, I mean.
Well, they have replacement trees. That's a good point, Eve. But there probably be one required, definitely for the red maple and anything over eight inches at chest height as, in diameter is.
It's like a very tall tree and that, that's, you know, the, I, I speak for the trees. I'm not happy about that. And I, and also, you know, the turnaround, I just will echo what others have said. It's, and for me, that bump out, it's not a matter of aesthetics. It's, it's just more impervious coverage and, and we know that that, you know, the, the less of that, the better. Especially if it's unnecessary.
I second George's, uh, oh, what do we call that?
Motion.
Motion.
Just for clarification, is removal of that bump out area, is that a condition of your motion, George? Or is this just a expression of the board's preference?
We'd like to make it as a condition that the, the applicant consult with the town administration about a landscaping plan to mitigate the impact, visual impact of the new construction. And I would like, I guess, to add that maybe, Steve, you can help me with this, the language about the, the, the turnaround and the, the, the impervious coverage.
Well, I guess we could say the turnaround needs to be eliminated and the, and the driveway continued from the motor court to the street in a consistent line.
I, I would accept that as a friendly amendment, so please add that to it.
So Karen, do you think you have enough to put something together?
I do.
Can you just read those? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we're clear for the applicants to consider. Can you just read back those conditions?
Well, my understanding is that it would be, one condition is the removal of the turnaround area so that the driveway will be a continuous line to the street. And the applicant will add landscape, landscaping, additional landscaping to buffer Mr. Nazaro's view of the garage. That will work with the subject to the review and approval of our zoning officer and the arborist with respect to the, the adequacy of the landscaping.
Yes.
Okay, and I've just, so that's, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have a, Karen, you understand what needs to go on. I'm just going to ask one last question of the applicant and then we'll vote. Are you comfortable with the terms of this motion?
Thank you. I was just gonna, I didn't want to interrupt, but I was gonna, the same thing. I wanted to get that clarification. I can't agree.
Okay.
And can I just ask a clarification on the condition? The, the clar, the clarification I'd like is that the condition you're, that you're suggesting in the motion is that we rec, we reduce the impervious coverage by more than what's required. Is that correct? Because we are currently in compliance with the impervious coverage, so you're. Because we are currently in compliance with the impervious coverage, so your, your condition is to reduce it further.
We're asking.
By eliminating that bump out.
That's it, we're just asking for the bump out to be eliminated. Which I don't think functionally hurts the, the overall circulation at all.
Right, it, right, it doesn't, it, it does allow for additional parking on the driveway, but I understand if that's a problem. You know, we want, we want to move forward, so we will, we, we want, I just want to fully understand what we're agreeing to, it's. Because we, I thought we were in compliance with the impervious coverage, so I'm, I just want to make sure that you're requesting that we go even below the. The limit.
I guess that's.
In order to get the approval, is that, is that?
Well, I mean, we're not, we're not forcing you to do it. We just, it's the opinion of the board that would enhance the overall scheme of the property. And you're, you know, again, considering you're asking for variances, we're, we're, we're trying to come to a. Some sort of medium.
Um, they, they are also over in the, um, the driveway width, and I think part of. Our reaction to seeing all that pavement is, it's, it's a lot, and even though you're within the impervious coverage. You, you're achieving it by, with, but with a visually, um, enormous amount of pavement. And so we are granting the additional width, but asking, can you take, get rid of that tail? Um, so I think for me, a lot of it is about, that's a lot of pavement to look at.
Okay, I understand, thank you for the clarification. If, if that's what it will take for the, the zoning board to, uh, grant the variances, then we will agree to that.
That's, that's what it's gonna take to corrupt the vote, for us to come to a consensus and vote. Okay, we're not, we're not holding you out to dry here. Okay, so we have an ordinance, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, Karen, you.
Who's the second?
Dean Schreiber.
Dean Schreiber, yep.
Yeah, and, um. Okay, so I think we're ready to vote. Claudia, can you call a roll, please?
Ten?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Stein?
Yes.
German Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think this will work out well for everybody. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Very much appreciated. Have a great night.
And you too. Okay. That's, we're done for the night, have, all have a good Thanksgiving and we'll see you on December eleventh.
Have a good one, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Good night.